Good evening and welcome to Council -- Town Council Chambers. This is the council meeting of Monday, July 24th. And we -- if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Roll call?
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Miana.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is consider and accept the town council reorganizational meeting minutes of July 10th, 2017.
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, additions? Okay, simple hand vote. All those in favor? Unanimous file, eight. Agenda item four, consider and accept the town council minutes of July 10th, 2017.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor? Eight. Okay. We -- you might notice a couple of changes here. We moved Chairman's announcements and Manager's announcements above the Subcommittee reports. So, I will start off. Number of items tonight. First, citizen concerns. This week, I think we all probably received a number of emails and such from various citizens. And I had gotten some inquiries and maybe other people did too as to how we handle them. And I just wanted to bring that up this evening because we all handle these probably a little bit differently or -- and certainly, it's nice to respond. It's important to be concerned and compassionate to the concerns of the citizens. Sometimes though, we don't have the answers. And there is a rule in our council rules and regs. It's Rule Number 19A, which is specific to councilors should present any issue or complaint from citizen to the manager for action as soon as it occurs. That's in context of councilors forum and, you know, how we handle that. So certainly, that is something that we should be mindful of and act accordingly. Rather than wait two weeks for it to come back up at councilors forum, I've always been a proponent to make sure that the information gets to where it needs to be so somebody can handle the issues. Moving on, school notices. I just wanted to mention too that I copied all of you on an email from Ms. Gullikson from the high school in regard to school information. Anything that comes through to me will be copied to everybody, Vice Chair and all councilors. I've asked that anything that comes through to be passed on. On that note, the presentation by Mr. Johnston. The interim receiver has been postponed for this evening. It was on as Agenda Item 8, and we are working on another date, possibly the 14th. He will let me know exactly what works for the school and to let us know what's going on. Agenda item number four, the agenda lineup. As I said, you noticed that made a little change here. The Subcommittee reports are now Agenda Item 7 here. And we've made a note, Counselor Steves and I spoke on a number of items, and we've all brought up the concern about the extra-long minutes and how that works at the beginning. And sometimes, we can go on for an hour and a half on just minutes. And then when it comes to that agenda item, it tends to be less relevant as to what was said at those minutes. So, on that note, we're asking that if you could summarize just, for instance, that you had a meeting, the topics, if those agenda -- just, you know, the agenda items per se, or if the agenda items are on tonight's meeting. That's pretty much all we want to do there, if you all agree, of course. Because then, what we're asking is that when it comes time for an agenda item, you read the pertinent section of the minutes. And obviously, minutes are always available to all residents in the office, in the Clerk's office, online. They get posted pretty quickly now. They do a good job at that. So, I think that would move the meeting along and get the business of the meeting done faster. I know Counselor Steves felt strongly about that and others. So, I think we can try it that way, if it works out. If there's some other change, more than open to either going back to the way we did it or something else. Let's see. Subcommittee chairs. Again, Counselor Steves and I discussed the Subcommittee -- the subcommittees, and we put together a list, and they have been presented to all. We -- I'll just announce, the general government is Counselor Steves as the chairperson, and Counselor Manna and Counselor Nash. The Department of Public Works is Counselor DePietro for the chair, and Counselor Nash and Counselor O'Clair. Education and Human Services, we have Counselor Carrasco as the chair, and Counselor O'Clair and Counselor McKenzie. Planning and Development, Counselor O'Clair is the chair, Counselor McKenzie and Counselor Morales. And Protection of Persons and Property, the chair is Counselor Manna with Counselor DePietro and Counselor Morales. So, that's how we laid those out. We do have a few people still on the committees. So, your appointments last till the end of the month or until we replace you. If you are a citizen's member, you can stay on until the committees meet with anybody who submitted their applications, and then they can decide. The committees will decide on their citizen members, and they'll come to council for ratification. Let's see. So, my next note, speaking of agenda switching up here a little bit. I've talked a lot in depth with a number of people on this, and specifically with Vice Chair Counselor Steves, in terms of citizens forum. A lot of times, again, citizens forum, like the minutes, tends to at times take up a large chunk of time at the beginning of a meeting when we have sometimes guests in the audience who need to speak. We have department heads who work all day and are going to be speaking on agenda items. And at times, it could take an hour, an hour and a half to get through citizens forum. So we've been discussing that idea, and I felt strongly that because of this reason, that we put citizens forum in front of councilors forum towards the end of the agenda. The other reason would be also that many times, the citizens come up to speak and we say, "There's an agenda -- oh, that's on the agenda. You can speak to that at the agenda time." And we have to interrupt and say, "Excuse me, sir," or "Excuse me, ma'am, we, you know, we can't talk about that right now. You have to wait till the agenda item." So I think this will give citizens more time. They could maybe even be watching a council and then decide they want to come down because they realize there's something that they want to say. On the other hand, every agenda item allows for discussion and input, and citizens certainly can talk to us during those agenda items. And then if there are all those other things that they bring up, like events and other various topics, we'll try it there, which is before councilors forum. And that way, councilors will remember what they're saying, and maybe there'll be something they'll want to say during the councilors forum as well versus two hours later or longer at times. So again, we'll try that out, see how it works. And that will be reflected in the next agenda, not in this agenda. We didn't want to change anything until the next agenda. Okay, Town Manager's Goals and Objectives. Councilors should be developing their list so that we can meet and collaborate for the upcoming year. We need to give some direction and provide the Town Manager enough time to have ample time to meet these directives that we come up with. So I'm asking you to start thinking about that, and we would like to hopefully get something together and finalize before the end of August. And that will give you a whole year of --
Nice.
Because I know this year, it was very short. So, I'm asking you to think about what maybe is left over, because we, you know, and then what we might want to add to that, or what is relevant or irrelevant. So, and give me some ideas of timing, what works good for everybody here in council to get together. Let's see, the Streetless Books are now available. Streetless Books. They are $12 each, and they're available in the Town Clerk's Office. I thought I mentioned that. I know we have a notice, and we all have received a copy of that. Thank you very much for providing those. Another notice, the Southbridge Business Partnership is meeting Wednesday, September -- I mean, excuse me, July 26th at 5:30 at Village Photo on Main Street. Again, any business that's interested, it's not just downtown anymore, it's the entire community. You're welcome to join in and share ideas and see how that collaboration can work for you. Another note, special meeting on Wednesday at 7 o'clock. I apologize if you didn't get enough notice. I know it was in the packet on Thursday. It was pretty much decided and posted by Wednesday to take up a very important topic regarding a dangerous dog hearing, in which the council is the authority on making a decision on that. So between the dog officer, the police chief, and everybody else that was involved, we were asked to hold a special meeting. So I'm hoping that you have that information. There's a lot in the packet, and I know that they're looking for us to come to some sort of decision on that after the hearing. So I note that that's 7 o'clock here in council chambers on Wednesday. And finally, this past Friday, July 21st, we lost a very dedicated friend of Southbridge. Ray Gothier passed away due to cancer. He was a very familiar face in the town hall, longtime chairman of the Southbridge Cable Advisory Committee. He was extremely knowledgeable cameraman, who spent countless hours of his time filming for Southbridge so that we could all enjoy our cable access programming. And just because he really was dedicated to our community. He will be very missed. Some of you may not know that Ray was also president of the Southbridge Fraternal Order of Eagles. And they had been planning a fundraiser to assist Ray and his family. And even though Ray has passed, there is still a lot of assistance that's needed. And I was asked to let you know that this benefit, which was scheduled -- is scheduled for Saturday, July 29th, is still ongoing. And I have little information on that. So if you're able to attend, it will be Saturday, July 29th at 3 o'clock. Tickets for the benefit are $12 per person. They can be purchased at the Eagles Club on Mill Street, 59 Mill Street in Southbridge. If you just want to make a donation, you can make checks payable to the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 334, and you make a note, "Ray Gothier Benefit," on your check. If you are attending and you want those tickets, they're asking that you purchase them by Wednesday so they can get a proper head count. There's going to be a roast beef dinner, raffles, music, and it's going to go from 3 o'clock on. So if you can support that effort, I'm sure the family would greatly appreciate that. And at this time, farewell -- let's see, yeah, farewells can be expressed on Thursday, July 27th, at the Morrel Funeral Home on Hamilton Street from 4 to 7. And at this time, I ask that we have a moment of silence for Ray. Please. Thank you. I don't know if there's anybody else who would like to add to that, or anybody want to make any comments? Okay. And that concludes my announcements. So the Town Manager's announcements are next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I only have one announcement for this evening, and that's from Whitewater, the company that runs our water company. And its release date is July 21st, immediately out to the public. Subject Charlton, Water Department to perform hydrant flow test. Southbridge Charlton. Southbridge Water Department will be performing hydrant flow testing on Wednesday, July 26th, 2017, at approximately 7 o'clock PM. The location tested will be nine different hydrant locations in the town of Charlton. The procedure will include testing the operation and capacity of the hydrants in the distribution system. Department requested during this period, customers check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals the next morning. This will clear after a brief run of the water at the tap, and it just has all the various people other notified in this announcement. And that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Could you please update us on the Fire Station Building Committee meeting that you had?
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
We've had one meeting to talk about what's going to be happening coming up with regard to the feasibility study or the study of developing a new firehouse. The committee met, myself and the committee members, along with the fire chief. He is currently looking at various proposals that have been happening around the state to model our document from. So that's the beginning of the process at this time. The fire chief has made it clear that he intends to update this board on a regular basis as to what happens at these committees. But it's just the very beginning of the process, and he's putting together a draft of that document. It will be reviewed, and eventually, we'll put out a request for quotes or a request for bids, depending upon what we decide to do, very shortly. He's going to bring it back to the committee first, but we want to have the committee look at that document, make sure they're happy with it. The procurement officer, I'll look at that document, make sure it meets all the 30B requirements, and then we'll move forward from that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Number 7, which is Subcommittee summaries. A, General Government.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on July 19th. It was a -- there were several of us there, most of the council, except for Counselor Carrasco. We had the Town Manager, DPW Director, Health Director, several citizens. We discussed several different items, which I'll bring up, Agenda Items Number 12, 13, 15, 16, and 17. And we approved all of them, almost all of them unanimously. One of them was two to one. And I'll give more details when you get to those items.
Any future meetings that you know of yet?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, yeah, August 2nd.
7 o'clock. It's okay to help each other out, yeah?
It is.
Counselor Manna?
August 2nd, 7 o'clock, which is going to be immediately after PPP.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a correction in the minutes, well, in addition, because it seems like there was something omitted that I had said, and it's on page 2. And it's, she, after, she's, she said after, not in favor of expansion of landfill outside the footprint of landfill, but there was more to that. I also said that I was in favor of speaking with businesses. So if you could just insert that in the minutes to have a more accurate understanding of what I was talking about, I'd appreciate it. And I'm sure you have the videotape, and it's running on TV, too?
I'm not sure if it's running. I gave it to them.
Thank you.
Okay, 7B is Department of Public Works. So that will be you, Mr. DePietro.
Madam Chair, since the chair has found fit for me to become chair of this committee, we have had no meeting as of late, so nothing to report. Thank you.
Agreed. Education and Human Services, Counselor Carrasco.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Planning and Development, Counselor Claire.
No meetings and no, or no minutes and no meeting schedule at the same.
And E, Protections Persons' Property, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no minutes to report, but I do have a meeting scheduled for August 2nd at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Again, Agenda Number 8 is Wearing In Presentations, and as we mentioned, that will be postponed, and we will let you know when. Agenda 9 is Citizens Forum. Is there anybody who would like to address the council at this time? Please come and state your name and address, and speak into the mic. Anyone who wants to speak?
(inaudible).
Pardon me?
(inaudible).
You're going to go? Okay. Mr. DePietro. Our cameraman, we'll give him a second here.
Thomas Ayaw, 35 Beach Street. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke up about the pothole repair near my house. I actually want to apologize and retract what I brought up. It turns out, the patch was done, you know, they put a really large, and it appeared to be hot patch, warm patch, whatever. But, so, I'm pretty satisfied with the repair that they did, and thank you.
Do you have anything else you would -- I mean, the DPW Director's here. Is there any other questions you would have for anybody? You're good? Thank you very much, Mr. Ayaw. Is there anybody else who would like to say anything? Speak to anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to move on. Agenda item number 10, vote to amend the town council meeting minutes of June 5th, 2017. Agenda item number 18 to read, quote, "Vote to appropriate the amount of $375,000 from landfill royalty receipts reserved account number 6790 to FY 2017 contributory retirement account," end quote, not $475,000 as stated in the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Counselor Manna?
Thank you. Madam Chair, because of the difference, we only have to amend this, or should we have to take the vote over again?
It's my understanding the vote was correct. It was the wording in the minutes that were wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick note, that I'll be abstaining, since I wasn't a member of council, although I believe I was in attendance. Thank you.
Okay, same thing with, okay. So all those in favor? Set seven, and two abstentions. Moving on, Agenda Item 11, vote to support further research into establishment of central dispatch within the town of Southbridge, with final plan to be ratified by Town Council.
Second.
Counsel, yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor, Mr. Manager?
Anyway, just a question, it's really for clarification. I think the wording is correct, but I want to be clear of what the intention here is. We had presented three various options for the town council to look at. It seemed to me that the Subcommittee was clear in selection Option 2, which was consolidating our internal departments. And I just want to make sure, the way this is written, it says establishment of central dispatch within the town of Southbridge. So being within, I'll just be clear, that is what we want to look at. Simply that one option of consolidating our current police and fire dispatch into one unit. Once we have a real plan for that, we bring it forward, and the council will approve that plan. That's okay. Just to make sure that was clear. All right, thank you.
And Counselor Claire, that was from your meeting, so that you believe the intent of, the recommendation by the --
Yes, that's what I had, that's what I had said to him.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. How long do you think this will take? Because we really need the police department, they really need the dispatcher, so how long does this?
And thank you, that's a very question, Madam Chairman. Right now, the police chief and the fire chief are discussing the issue, and I apologize, but the police chief has been sick for the last week or so with pneumonia, so I'm sure they haven't quite started that discussion yet. So that discussion has to occur. We have to develop a clear, concise plan for how we're going to do that consolidation. That involves any new equipment that might be needed, how many new staff members are going to be put on. Also, we are going to have to negotiate with the union about this particular issue, because it does have an impact on their bargaining unit. So this could take some time. Do I believe that we could come to some reasonable plan within six months? Yes, I do. But until we go along those processes, I can't give you an exact time. But I think that's a reasonable time that we can bring something to you that's solid and something that you can consider approving.
Okay, but this is on the top of your priority list.
Yeah, this is an important issue. I mean, this is a, frankly, I think it's on the top of the police and fires.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's an important issue. We've talked about this for a long time, so we need to start taking action, because we want to particularly improve the quality of our dispatch, and a way to do that is through this process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor? That's good. I'll take nine. Who? Any opposed? One opposed, I'm sorry. So that's eight, one. Motion passes. Okay, Agenda Item Number 12, vote to allow the treasurer, collector, and town accountant, finance director to be payday stipend for hours worked for the school department from their town department budgets, with funds reimbursed from the school department to the applicable town budgets.
Second.
Counselor Steves.
This was our first Agenda item in General Government, so I'll read through the item here. Mr. Sanangelo noted that the school has again been having issues with keeping staff, including recently losing the business manager. To fill the gaps, April Clef and Mindy of the treasurer's office have spent many hours of overtime there. April gets paid, Mindy accumulated more than 68 hours before the fiscal year ended. And he agreed with the schools that the best way to cover her time is to transfer funds to the tune of a little more than $4,000. I remember you cited a specific figure, but I couldn't remember. In my notes, I think it's around $4,800. Nobody's yet sure if the schools have a fiscal '17 surplus, because their books aren't closed yet. If they don't, Mr. Sanangelo said that he'll give her comp time. At this point, Karen Harnoy has worked on only a few hours for the schools and isn't seeking a stipend, but Mr. Sanangelo said that he wants to ensure she can get reimbursed if necessary. This vote will not set a specific dollar value or time limit, it just allows the process to happen, because their job descriptions don't include work for the schools. While the town is responsible for year-end accounting and review, town officials shouldn't normally have to do day-to-day work for the schools. Counselor Clements noted that that's why the state is looking into hiring an outside contractor to handle school accounting. While salaried folks know that they can get overtime work without extra pay, she said she felt that this work should be reimbursed, but had originally thought we couldn't do it. I noted that I asked about other employees possibly getting these things. Mr. Sanangelo said that none will be affected, and that he has yet to hear who the school's new accountants will be. Counselor Manna made the motion to allow treasurer, collector, and town accountant, finance director to be paid a stipend for hours worked for the school department from their town department total budgets, come on, brain, with the funds reimbursed from the school department to the applicable town budgets. Counselor Nash seconded, and it passed two to one.
Is there anybody who would like to talk on this? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I was actually the one dissenting vote in that committee meeting, as you might recall. And I would just like to reiterate that generally speaking, I don't have an issue with our treasurer or with our collector doing what's needed. However, some of the issues that I raised probably weren't fully disclosed in the minutes. Not going to ask you to insert anything there, Vice Chair Steves, but I would like to point out that I don't expect that the Town Manager is going to instruct any employee of the town to work until 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning, and then show up the next day to put in a full day's work and be 100% in their regular duties. That's one objection that I've had, and I just want that for the record, so that you'll understand why I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor? Simple hand vote? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and opposed, two. Seven, two. Could I add, if for any time that we do a hand vote, if you feel that you would like your vote registered as a name, if you want that in for the record officially, please just interject, and we can do that, so.
No, I also want to add, I will add your comments back in a minute.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, Agenda Item 13, vote to award tie-in bond, a contract for the design, construction, administration, and oversight for the H-Foot Road, Berry Corner Road, and Eleanor Lane Waterline Project per ACO agreement with the state of Massachusetts.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves.
That was our second Agenda item. Town Manager Sanangelo noted the town is a project manager because the DEP felt we were the most competent of those involved. Actually, I think Heather said that. Normally, such projects don't go through bidding, because water lines are exempt from Chapter 30B, but he and Ms. Blakely advertised in several places to get three good bids, StanTech, Tie &amp; Bod, and Wright Pierce. The first two came in very close, and Ms. Blakely said that she'd be willing to work with either of them. The latter was nearly $300,000 higher, and she had concerns about their ability to staff it. Mr. Sanangelo said that they ultimately chose Tie &amp; Bod despite their slightly higher price, because StanTech is behind schedule in the airport project. The ACO requires us to finish the water line within a year of the new pump station's completion, which is being designed by, designed and built by Exxon and Charlton near the 169 Berry Corner Road intersection. Ms. Blakely said they've agreed on the land price and are working on purchase and sale agreement. Engineering has begun, but the station can't go to bid without her approval. She expects that next spring. Noting the project won't affect commercial drive traffic, but it'll require closing parts of Berry Corner to deal with lots of alleged and other issues. When done, Berry Corner, H-Foot Road, and Eleanor will be repaved, but it will still be narrow. At this point, 47 of the 70 households in that area have agreed to hook into the water line, which is more than needed, and she expects that some of the others to do so as work happens, but probably not 100%. This is Heather, I mean. She also noted that they'll be doing public outreach as part of the recently created public information plan with the landfill, and the project will have public hearings and meetings before various Charlton boards, including Water Sewer Commission. Tie &amp; Bod's proposal also calls for at least one presentation to the council. Counselor Manna moved to recommend awarding the Tie &amp; Bod, the engineering services contract for the design, construction, management, and oversight for H-Foot Road, Berry Corner Road, and Eleanor Lane Waterline Project, per the ACO agreement with the state of Massachusetts. Counselor Nash seconded, and it passed unanimously, three to zero. And I also want to point out that there actually is a comma, an a comma in the Agenda item that shouldn't be there.
Okay.
After construction. It's construction administration, not construction administration and oversight. They're not doing the building.
Any questions? Seeing none, let's do this as a roll call, because we're awarding a contract, I think it's important.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
They're not doing the building.
Any questions? Seeing none. Let's do this as a roll call because we're awarding a contract. I think it's important.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Agenda item number 14. Vote to accept the FY 2018 State Council on Aging Grant in the approximate amount of $32,650.
Second.
Discussion. Do you have questions?
Yeah, actually, could you tell us a little bit?
Through you, Madam Chairman. This is an annual grant that we get that runs the operation, or certain operations within the administration of the senior center. It's a regular grant that, like I said, we get every year. We actually quite haven't gotten a grant in yet. The actual money can be spent effective July 1, but the formal documents haven't come in. But we wanted to get this accepted because we have people that are actually funded through this money, and we want to make sure that they can operate and run the senior center as appropriate.
But if we haven't received the money yet, how can we pay them?
I think, I guess I'm going to refer that question to our town accountant, our finance director. And the question is, through you, Madam Chairman, is we haven't quite yet received a grant for the senior center money. And the question is, how are we paying for the position even though the grant award says we can start effectively spending the money July 1?
We just go ahead and front the money until the grant gets approved.
And just be reimbursed.
And the money comes in.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
We don't have to officially transfer it from anywhere or anything like that.
A question. Will the, he notes that the formula, that we may notice a decrease a few percent, two or three percent for the FY, SFY 2018 fiscal year. Will that affect anything? If it's...
Again, if there's a small decrease in the amount of the grant?
Yeah. It says you and all formula grant recipients may anticipate a slightly reduction, slightly reduction, a slight reduction, why did it say slightly, in formula grants, somewhere between two and three percent. Do you anticipate that being a problem at all?
I don't think so. I mean, he'll just have to maybe adjust the hours a little bit of the custodian over there or something, but...
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Should work out.
Thanks for the memo. Okay. Any other questions on this item? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, nine. Agenda item number 15. Vote to accept a $35,000 community compact grant to evaluate combining the DPW/School Facilities Management Group.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves.
That was item number three on our agenda. Mr. Sanangelo said that this is a state-community compact grant to look at regionalization or cost savings, in this case, cost savings, with the goal of addressing a lot of inefficiencies. Right now, both departments buy the same equipment and materials for the same kinds of work, and this could be unified within DPW. If so, DPW will help schools with snow plowing, school staff can help maintain parks, the latter might even be able to help with street plowing, reducing the need for contractors. It'll require consolidating union contracts and other things, and a consultant will come in to see whether it can work out cost-effectively. It's out for bids now, and with all work being done with state money. That later prompted Counselor Nash to say that he wouldn't support another study if it weren't being, say, funded. He noted that we received, we received notice of the award about two months ago prompting myself to note that that kind of delay is why I raised an issue with grants not coming to council for approval. Counselor Clements thanked me for looking up the law, which is Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, that requires it, noted we should, those things should generally go to subcommittees. Mr. Sanangelo later added that we'll soon see to $30,000, $40,000 tech grant for the schools coming forward. Dave Smick noted that at least two similar studies were done years ago, most recently under Mike Coughlin. Mr. Sanangelo agreed, but said that School Facilities Manager Mike Como reviewed them and found them out of date. Counselor Clements said that this will come back to either DPW or EHS and ask for a timeline. Ms. Blakely said it depends on the RFP process. She expects work to start sometime before summer ends. Counselor Nash moved to recommend the acceptance of the community compact grant for $35,000 to evaluate combining DPW and School Facilities Management. Counselor Manna seconded, and it's passed three to zero.
Any other? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager. I think he's probably best suited to answer my question. As you're aware, sir, I don't think I'm alone when it comes to feasibility studies, engineering studies. I think there are others that have a hard time accepting a lot of them. And just a note and a question to you. With a grant like this and the sort of evaluation that would be conducted, what sort of time commitment would it require of anybody at the DPW, the DPW director, the assistant or the town engineer? And what's more, is it a high-level type of evaluation? I realize that in the interest of efficiency and trying to consolidate and save money could be considered a necessary evil, but I just wonder, especially with the DPW director, who we ask a lot of already, is this something that's going to take a week out of her time?
Through you, Madam Chairman. First of all, it's a good question. I thank you for the question. And actually, it helps in that issue. Let me explain. There was some time that was attributed to putting together the request for proposals from the DPW director and myself, the school business manager and the school superintendent who worked on developing the RFP for this project. And really, it was the main part of this that was unique is the actual scope of services. In other words, what specifically are we asking the consultant to do for the town of Southridge in relationship to the consolidation, or potential consolidation of the two departments? So they're going to have to look at every specific job description involved in that, analyze the job description, look at the current work that they're doing, analyze that work, look at the storage and the equipment that is currently in place, and see what equipment do we really need. For instance, we probably have two sets, a variety of things, one at the DPW, another one within the school facility. So there might be a lot more equipment than we actually need. They're going to have to evaluate the union contract. The reason, in fact, for this grant that is proposed by the governor's office for the community compact is to look at ways to regionalize to save money. That's the whole point of this grant. What, doing it in this light, this feasibility studies take away pressure from my staff in trying to do all this work that we just don't have the capacity to do. So the feasibility study will have experts who do this on a regular basis, evaluate all this information, and give us recommendations to see if, in fact, this would make sense, where the savings would be, where there might be more costs, where maybe we don't have enough staff, other places where we might have too much staff. So that's really what we're looking for out of this. And thank God we have this money because we just wouldn't have the capacity, myself and Heather and the business manager, to do this work. It's sort of external to our everyday jobs. So we look at this as a positive thing. We appreciate the governor's support and the Department of Budget Services, I'm using the wrong name, Revenue Services, that are doing this. And it's a real benefit that the state is actually partnership, having a partnership with municipalities to deal with this kind of issues. Because without that, we just wouldn't be able to tackle it. So I think this is a good thing all the way around. Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes, through you, Chairman. To the town manager. How much would the cost be for we would be paying the consultant? And how much would the cost be for the feasibility study?
Okay, through you. The grant from the state through the compact is $35,000.
I see that.
That is the cost that we would pay the consultant for all the work. In other words, developing the feasibility study, doing all the work, coming to town council to explain the results of the feasibility study, going to the school committee or the receiver, explaining the results of the committee, making recommendations about the union contract. So all of that work would be encompassed through the grant amount of $35,000.
And there would be no further fees or costs or anything else?
No cost to the town of Southridge at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I was actually wondering, curious, when you mentioned the idea of the possibility of that there might be some people that are kind of in wrong jobs, will it also include the possible cost of retraining people?
I'm not sure if there's going to be, their work is very much alike in a lot of ways. But let's, for instance, say that some of the guys that were part of the facilities management team at the schools wanted to plow. And it could save us money in that respect because right now we hire vendors. It sometimes costs more than what our internal drivers could be. So there might be some required training by Heather to make sure that they understand the roots and what has to be done. So that's typical. Whenever we get new people on board to do different types of work, there is some training involved in that. I'm not sure that that's part of the grant as it is everyday cost that we associate with just doing that kind of work. A big benefit, frankly, is that we store equipment both at our DPW and at the old firehouse. We'd love to consolidate that cost so we don't have that dual cost. And that could free up that building entirely for us to sell it. So we might actually make some revenue by freeing up that particular building as well. So there's a lot of things that have to be looked at, and we'll know more once we have the study as to what we should and could do.
Also, that reminds me of the fact, the old fire station building. Did we ever clarify the deed issue on that fire station building?
That I'm unaware of. So it's something, obviously, if we are going to take over that building, because you're right, I think there was an issue about what that building could specifically be used for. So we'll have to evaluate that if we decide to do anything with that building if it becomes free. So clearly, that's something we're going to have to decide, and this council will have to decide what it wants to do with that building if it becomes free. If it wants to sell it, keep it for some reason, although frankly, I'm not sure what the need would be. But it's something we'll have to evaluate when we get to that point.
I think you refer, Counselor Steves, to the ability to be able to sell it, or whether the statute of limitations of some sorts in that offering to when we received it many, many, many years ago, whether it still is intact and forced. So we're supposed to legally look at that.
Yeah. Because I thought that was kind of in process at some point, probably even before you got here. And it just kind of dropped off the radar screen, so.
Anybody else? See anybody? Hand vote on that one? All in favor? Okay, looks like nine.
Yep.
Motion passes. Agenda item number 16. Vote to accept the state green community grant awarded to the town in the amount of $206,130 to implement energy-efficient projects.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on that. Counselor Steves?
That was agenda item number four on our agenda, which Mr. Sanangelo noted that he had already publicly presented this award, and no money's been spent yet, although it hasn't been formally accepted by the town. Counselor Clements asked about using it for water and sewer efficiency projects. Ms. Blakely said there are several possibilities there, but first she's looking at converting town hall to gas heat and fixing the fact. Heat control is unreliable in several rooms, and at the school administration building, which uses a lot of energy. Water sewer lights are being done now by the National Grid grant that did the other buildings. Counselor DePietro asked about town hall windows, but Ms. Blakely said that their payback would be more than 10 years, too long for the grant. We might be able to get funding for future grant cycles, though. She added, "Windows are subject to state historical requirements, but not the HVAC work." Counselor Nash moved to recommend acceptance of the state green communities grant awarded to the town in the amount of $206,130 to implement energy efficiency projects. Counselor Manna seconded, and it passed three to zero.
Further discussion? Clements? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous of nine? Motion passes. Agenda item number 17. Vote that the council chair seek legal review of the future general government subcommittee recommended resolution regarding landfill expansion.
So moved.
Second for the sake of discussion.
Okay. Let's make a note, we have a draft of what was discussed at the meeting. So you can read your minutes, and then we'll discuss the case.
Because that came up as item number five on our agenda. The discussion started with four potential resolutions, all based on texts drafted by Counselor Claire. She said that she consulted, was it a Dave Waters or Dan Waters?
Dane.
Huh?
Dane.
Dane?
D-A-N-E.
Oh, Dane, okay, thank you. Dane Waters, okay. Dane Waters, an advisor from Washington, DC, who helps community groups, and wanted text that was very simple and would reinforce the June 13 no vote on question one. Counselor Manna expressed concerns about the legality of any resolution in light of the current landfill contract, claiming it targets a certain company, and urged the council to look at legal advice first. She later said that she's not in favor of expansion of the landfill outside the footprint of the landfill and in favor, speaking of businesses. Mr. Sanangelo said that he believes the contract allows Casella to use land within the current footprint, if the state okay's the proposed expansion. But landfills are not listed in the town's table of uses for zoning, so it'd require a special permit to expand to the McKinstry Land and other places. He said he's not sure the council has legal authority to prohibit it outright, or whether such a restriction has to go through one of the land use boards. Mr. Pelletier said the town could list landfills in a use table and specifically say no to all zones, and that would prohibit them. But requiring expansion contingent on a vote would be an issue with the strict timelines under 310 CMR 16, which requires site assignment hearings to begin no more than 30 days after DEP grants its suitability approval. The current expansion plan also requires ZBA approval, he says, because the landfill is already a non-conforming use, and therefore, the law requires any expansion that shall not be substantially more detrimental than the current use, he said. Counselor Claire cited the ballot questions referenced to the airport and noted she wants the resolution to address the use of town land and follow the vote of the people. Mr. Sanangelo said that they cannot use any more town land without a council vote. So Counselor Claire said that she sees it as within our purview to specifically state we oppose that, and Mr. Sanangelo later agreed. Counselor Clements suggested adding the phrase "town-owned land beyond the current contract." Several other people made comments that largely reiterated concerns raised above, with some arguing that it shouldn't need legal review, others raising various landfill technical issues, comments by Casella representatives before the vote, whether a resolution infringes the power of quadriadidushial boards, and suggesting mostly minor textual changes. Some wanted to limit the possibility of any expansion, some just on public land. Counselor Manna moved to recommend the town council that the chair seek legal review of the recommended general government resolution regarding landfill expansion. Counselor last seconded. Counselor Clements said that doing this now would enable such a review more quickly when the subcommittee finishes working on it and has a final resolution to present, and said that she wants to present one that reflects consensus. Kevin Buckson asked the committee to make sure the public gets to see the final wording before the council's vote, and the motion passed three to zero.
Counselor Carrasco?
My first question is, why are we going through the council chair when all other legal reviews go through the town manager's office?
Do you want to? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. It's my understanding that when we, there's a policy issue and the town council has resolved to vote, that the council chair seek legal review on it. I mean, this is what we voted on last year, I believe. Actually, you did this, seeking legal review last year in regards to the town manager, but we didn't even vote on it. You just went and sought legal review. When it's in our policy, the town council rules and rights that the town council actually get the approval before the council chair seeks legal review. So that is why.
It's, we, it came to, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor McKenzie?
Madam Chair. You can answer that question, and then I'll speak.
Okay. So at some point a number of years ago, when a lot of councillors were going to legal for too many issues, it became, I'm not sure, though, if it was when we changed charter or when we changed the council rules, that it was decided that any issues could go through by vote of council. So in other words, this group would have to decide if it was right to have legal counsel because it costs money, and then the chair would seek legal review. And I take your point. I understand to go through the manager on most issues. This is a policy. This is something that you're asking the council to bless as a resolution from the council. So it just made sense.
from the council, so, it just made sense, and I was more than happy to get it done even before, you know, our next meeting is until August 14th, and as I said to Chairman Steves and the others that were there, it's very close to being, it's tweaked, and people want to do some more reviews, so he's having another meeting, but if you agree to have legal counsel now, then as soon as that's done, we can get that done, and it can go on the council meeting for the 14th. If not, it just takes longer. So, I was more than happy to push that along, to do whatever needed to be do, to accelerate the process, is how I described it, it didn't come out through the minutes, but that is how we talked about it that evening. So, but the process was to get permission by the council as to whether it's, you know, it's worth spending the money to do something legally. That's what's in, it's either council rules, or it's in the charter, that we seek a vote by the council for that.
It doesn't seem to be in the council rules.
Okay.
And I know, I know we amended the charter to send, so that all town departments made sure that they went, any lawyer requests went through the town manager. I know that's in the charter.
We voted on it, and we made it a policy by council. We've been here a long time.
That's my counsel.
Even if, if at times the manager was seeking review on something, it belonged, the, the, the authority belonged to the manager to seek review on something, or we could, councilors could ask for a review, but we had to get consensus amongst, a majority of the councilors had. Because we could have an issue that the manager doesn't have, for instance, last year, we should have actually made a vote on, on the other issue. We can ask reviews, but we need to make sure it's okay with everybody that we're spending town money on that. It was not right for one counselor, or three councilors, to go and seek legal review without everybody being transparent that they were doing that, so. Go ahead, Councilor Carrasco.
My concern here is not the, the order of, the, I believe it was a policy that was set, I do remember that, and the reason I went for review to the legal attorney, Mr. Caprera, was number one, because it was an issue dealing with our town manager, so I wasn't going to advise him to go seek this himself. Number two is, this is an ongoing issue, I understand that it's a resolution, but this is an ongoing issue, and I feel that it's best that our town manager handles this as he knows exactly what's going on with the contract, he knows where we are. I just don't see the need for any of us nine to continue to get involved in regards to such a big decision, because things can happen. Again, I understand that it's a resolution, but I think it should go through the town manager. I don't think the council chair should have to go seek the review and find out, and have a sit-down meeting with the attorney to find out what's going on here.
I would expect to just approach a municipal lawyer with the data that you give, and let them send us back a written notice. I don't expect to go and have a sit-down discussion, just so you know. Councilor McKenzie, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes. I, Madam Chair, I do believe that, I think that we need to have a, our town man, I think that we definitely need to have our town manager be, to seek review rather than any of the councilors, because number one, that is his, falls under his jurisdiction and his responsibilities as the town manager, to find the information and report back to us, give us the, the information that we need to be able to make a decision. I don't see any, any, not only, not only a chairperson, but I don't see any counselor actually having to do that responsibility. I would much rather see the man that we pay as a manager to manage.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Counselor DePietro.
I think, I'm sorry, Counselor Manna, you're right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I respectfully disagree with Councilor Carrasco and Councilor McKenzie. This is a policy for the town council to look at, it's a resolution. There is, like, there's a huge legal conflict here, I feel, and that's why I asked for, I wouldn't support this without it going to legal review. All that Chairman Clements would be doing is submitting this as a chairperson to counsel, asking them, is this, is this legal? You know, I don't feel comfortable without it going through legal review. The town manager, this has nothing to do, this is a resolution. Well, basically, it could possibly affect the contract, but it's, it's, you know, this is a policy, it's a resolution for the town council, it has nothing to do with the town manager. Town manager manages the town, doesn't manage the town council, we manage the town manager, the town council does. So, I believe that Council, Chairman Clements, you know, and I think that we have a right to seek legal opinion, if we sow, if we sow chokes, you know, I mean, that's, that's, it's up to us, and, you know, when we came up with a policy, I do believe that there were, town council is just going to the attorneys and asking for legal advice, and that bill adds up at $200 an hour, come on, they don't break, you know, they break it down into 10-minute increments, you know, that's a lot of money. So, you know, I, I understand the policy, this is a resolution, this is the town council, it's not the town manager, it's the town council. The town manager should be left out of this resolution, that's all, thank you.
Councilor McKenzie?
Yes, Madam Chair, I respect the comments from Counselor Manna, I really do, and I think she makes a valid point. However, I think that the resolution is made by us, but the legal research and the legal review should be done by the town manager, then brought back to us for the decision. We, and he could actually get us the information, and give us all we need to know, and then we will actually make that decision as a council. Thank you.
Counselor DePietro, did you have a hand?
Madam Chair, I think in and of itself, having attended the meeting, and there was some very healthy discussion regarding this resolution, and I really don't think the line item, as, as written here, really gives to the heart of it. It's all based on a vote that this town made in favor of having counsel, that was worded, to direct the town manager in these negotiations. Now, if we're going to further that with this resolution, to my interpretation, it's for us to decide as, or to know as a body, that legally we can do this, so why would this go through the town manager coming out of subcommittee? I don't understand. Unless I completely misinterpreted what the intent is.
Actually, I think you are, Counselor DePietro. I think the, well, what this is, it's, Councilor Manna made a motion to have, to seek legal review of this resolution. It's not, it's not a legal review of the ballot question itself. Okay, the general government has not, has not formally endorsed the resolution yet, we haven't, we haven't voted up yet, but it will probably come out in the next meeting. And, so, but the, the idea at the, at GenGov was to have it so that, that the, basically the process would be set up in place, so that it would, it would immediately go up to the lawyer, and, you know, to be honest with you, I personally don't think, it really makes that much of a difference whether the chairman does it, or the town manager does it. I'm honestly not sure, I keep bouncing back and forth on whether or not it even needs legal review, to be honest with you. Since we did talk about the idea of, of whether or not, I mean, we, I think we came to consensus back at GenGov, that if we're talking about town-owned, public land only, it doesn't need it, because it's, it's within our purview. I think so, that maybe raises a question that, to me, is that if we are, if we want it to be legally reviewed, maybe we should throw an alternate, alternate line saying, that looks at both of these issues, whether it's private and town, and therefore, that we can get clarification where the, where the line draws. Because that's kind of, I think, what we're trying to figure out. But, you know, I, it's, it's not about the ballot question itself per se, because that was, that was voted down. This is just reinforcing the vote that, that happened in June.
Could I respond, Madam Chair?
Just please, Counselor.
No, no, it's certainly not completely about the ballot question, but obviously related to it.
Yeah, of course.
But, the, the language, as it was discussed at that meeting, pertain to what's going to be this council, and probably future councils, resolution on, as, as a resolution on this. Why would therefore not the town council seek legal counsel before bringing it to open council, and then handing it to town manager? I don't understand why this is a question. I'll do respect to Counselor Strata.
Counselor Carrasco?
Counselor Carrasco?
Counselor Carrasco.
Counselor Carrasco, excuse me.
Counselor Manna.
I'm getting by, I'm sitting in his old seat.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Okay, I said in the subcommittee, it's not in the minutes, but it's on one of the two videos floating around out there. I do not want to put myself in a position that could potentially cost this town millions and millions of dollars. Now, this is a policy for the town councils. The town manager does not set our policy, the town council sets policy.
That's true.
It is up to the town council to seek legal review. We are just doing what we voted on a couple of years ago, and that's seeking, we're doing the right thing, seeking a vote for the chair to go and bring this to municipal lawyer, saying, is this okay? You know, if, you know, if, if, I guess Counselor Clements could have just went behind our backs and just sent it to the attorney, and, you know, asked her opinion himself, you know, but she didn't. She did the right thing. It's on the agenda, we're discussing it, and it, you know, it's, it's up to the town council, it's not up to the town manager on this one. I would agree with you on the landfill contract and everything else, that's his purview, not to go to seek legal advice. It's not his purview to seek legal advice on our policy, though. Thank you.
So that the public will know what we supported, we supported in that meeting, this is the tentative resolution at this moment, it might be online somewhere, too, I imagine, but, so this is the Town of Southbridge Resolution by the Southbridge Town Council to respect the will of the people regarding the expansion of the landfill. Whereas on Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, the citizens of Southbridge voted no on question one, which would have required the town manager to negotiate a contract with Casella for continued management of an expanded landfill. And whereas on that day, the citizens of Southbridge voted overwhelmingly, 1,303 to 852, 60 to 40 percent, in opposition to question one, with said defeat making clear that the voters of Southbridge are opposed to any expansion of the landfill, and whereas the members of town council are elected by the citizens of Southbridge, and by their vote are controlled with, entrusted with the responsibility to protect the will of the people. Therefore, be it resolved, one, that the town council will place any future expansion of the landfill beyond the property defined in the extension agreement of 2007, on an election ballot to be voted on by the citizens, and, two, that the town council will not consider any expansion of the landfill unless directed to by a vote in the affirmative of, of a majority of the Southbridge citizens voting on such a question. Now, that's just what came out of general government at that time, there's another meeting, and I know there was a little tweaking still they were looking to do, but, the suggestion, when Counselor Manna asked for a review on behalf of the council, so to speak, because she's a counselor, and she asked for a view, I said, I'll put it on, on the agenda, and we can then make a decision as a council to spend the money on a legal review or not. That way, the process could move and be expedited, and if you want this on the Agenda 14, or whatever month you want it on, I had no problem, because I supported this as well. So, that's where we're at right now. Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So, I, you know, I had some, some hesitation and some reservations about this agenda item. I know that in the beginning, when we started talking about, you know, when the meeting started going forward, and all of a sudden there were four different drafts of the same contract with, you know, different versions and some dilution in these different versions, that, you know, I was anticipating that this is just going to die in subcommittee and never actually come to the council. I would be more comfortable with the town manager seeking the legal review, because the town manager, unlike every single one of us, has no inherent bias going into a conversation with somebody about this. If it was a person, if it was a personnel issue with the town manager, some kind of conflict of interest, and anything of that nature, then I would absolutely be supportive of the chair going to seek the legal counsel, but in this specific circumstance, I would rather see the town manager, and also, I would also like to see resolution and potential bylaw regarding landfill expansion. I know that, at this point, there is no bylaw on the table, but it was brought up in subcommittee, and if we're going to the town attorney for one issue, we can at least get a legal determination for both issues, so that if it does come back up to subcommittee, now we're ready, and we don't have to go back down again. So, those.
Madam Chair.
Are my issues. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. You guys, who is first?
Chairman.
Okay, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Counselor McKenzie. We're voting to seek review on this. If we're adding something, then that needs to be a separate item itself, and it's not an emergency.
Read the motion.
Read the motion. Vote to.
Only once it's recommend, what's recommended from subcommittee, it has not been recommended by subcommittee yet, what we were trying to do is get permission to seek review at some point, once it's recommended.
Right, but she's asking you, if you're gonna, if we're gonna seek legal review on this, she wants the bylaw.
On a bylaw, too.
A bylaw, and that's, to me, is a whole separate, yes, that's a whole separate issue.
A whole bylaw's a bigger.
Can I respond?
Yes, please.
I did use the word potential, potential bylaw. I just want to leave it open, so that's, that's an option for us, since we're voting it here on the council floor, thank you.
Are you all set, Counselor Manna?
I'm all set.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. The legal review would be through our town attorney, is that correct?
I would recommend it go through a municipal lawyer, not through a town attorney, who handles smaller options versus a larger component like this. This is municipal government law versus just the standard issues that Mr. Caprera would handle, leases contracts, minimums contracts, it should go through our municipal people, which we have, which we, we either trust them or we don't, I mean, that's really what it comes to. Yeah, or McConnell, or, yeah. I mean, I'm not going out to seek counsel in some, you know, big land of Boston or whatever I'm talking about, take, just, all I was doing was exercising what I'm supposed to exercise according to. I was asked by a chair, by a counselor, that this counselor wanted legal review, I said we'll get a vote by this council to accept paying legal review.
Right.
That's what we're all here to decide, is whether we spend the taxpayers' money on something that's important. This is important enough to bring forward, Counselor Claire's put most of this, much of this together, and there was more, Counselor Steves has worked on it, and others, I assume. All I offered was to expedite the process and provide it to the municipal lawyers, or make sure it was municipal lawyers, because I think that's important, because it's municipal government contract law, not just, you know, it's municipal issue, and that's all I was doing. So, I'm, I'm, sorry that it's come to such conflict, but.
If I may continue, I appreciate your willingness to, to do that, and I also like the concept of seeking a legal review, I think that that's good. I just would prefer that the town manager do the, meet with the municipal lawyer, rather than any counselor. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. It's, nobody will be meeting with an attorney face-to-face, it's going to be probably scanned, a little email typed, faxed over, whatever, and you'll get some legal advice on it. Yes, you can, no, you can't, you might want to change this, you might want to do this, you might want to do that.
Right.
Okay? So, now, this is town council policy, and we're asking the town manager, who we pay, okay, a salary, to take time out of his day, when he could be doing other important things for the town, and we're asking a town counselor, I could ask, I could ask to, to seek legal review, and shoot off an email to an attorney, and he's going to shoot one back off to me, and that's going to be the end. Almost the end of it. So, I, I don't, I don't see what the problem is. Well, I kind of do, but, those are my personal opinions that I'm not going to express here right now, and that's all, thank you.
Counselor Steves.
To be honest with you, if, if we're going to do this, I think that, I personally, all I care is that everybody gets the information. I'm not really, I consider about where it comes from, as long as it's a legitimate legal review. You know, that's really what it comes down to, me. And actually, to bounce back to what Counselor Claire said earlier, I was thinking about, about this for a second, and I was thinking about making, moving to amend this agenda item to say, to vote that the council chair or town manager seek legal review of the future general government subcommittee, and, this is actually oddly phrased, to seek legal review of any future general government subcommittee recommended resolution and/or potential bylaw regarding landfills mentioned. Because this may end up being two separate things, because if we're going to get this, get this reviewed fairly soon, any bylaw that may come forward would probably be farther down the pipe, because that'll take some work. That's just my thought on that, so.
I agree. So, you're putting that with an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, we just want to make sure that that's recorded properly.
You want me to say it again there, Max?
General Government Subcommittee.
Resolution and/or potential bylaw regarding landfill expansion.
I'm going to go, Counselor Carrasco, speak first.
I think we can't just, number one, I agree that this is a very important thing. I agree that it should have legal review.
Yeah.
But I do not agree that the council chair should be involved. I, I agree that if we're going to go your way with the potential bylaw, we can't pick either council chair or the town manager, we have to make a decision, because what's going to end up happening is, they're both going to go, so they're going to have two different bills, because they're both going to talk. So, we have to make a decision tonight, whether it's the town manager or the council chair. I will not support the council chair, I will support the town manager in this motion.
Can we compromise on some other counselor to do it?
Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize for putting my hand up so many times, however, we just had a, some charter amendments, and there's supposed to be a bylaw review committee formed.
Right.
So, I believe that this, the potential expansion, I think we already, we can clear that up right now. Anything that Counselor O'Clair has suggested in regards to a bylaw in the landfill can be reviewed at that committee, because our charter states that after the, the charter changes, that you're supposed to have the bylaw.
It's not the same thing.
Pardon me?
I would say that, if I may say, that's, that's really not the same thing, because this is, we're talking. is, we're talking, in this case, about a potential bylaw that doesn't yet exist, as opposed to reviewing the bylaws.
Well, then, you know what, two years, still my floor, two years ago, two years ago, I was told, when I suggested something, that that falls under the purview of the bylaw review committee, or three years ago, whenever it was, and it was in regards to a new, a new bylaw, and I should bring it to the bylaw review committee. So, I believe that this would potentially fall under that, and we could resolve that issue right there, because now you have a committee, and you already have the attorney, because they have the attorney up there if I can call, when they have questions in regards to the bylaws.
Councilor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just to directly touch on that, we can, we can still, at this point, we have a resolution drafted. If you, in the conversation with the lawyer, say, if a bylaw were to follow close to these same lines, would that also be okay, or not okay, or whatever the legal counsel ends up deciding? I don't even think that the bylaw needs to be drafted. I don't think that this is, this shouldn't be this complicated. So, it's just asking a question of a lawyer, when you're already asking a very similar question. We can either pay for it all now, or pay for the resolution now, and then, a month and a half from now, come back and say, all right, go talk to the same lawyers, more billing, about pretty much the same exact issue, except now we're gonna be talking about a bylaw. I'm just trying to be, you know, a little bit, you know, fiscally responsible with this, while also being very thorough, and I think that, you know, the community deserves that. That's all. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Thank you, just to the amendment, because I really don't want to be put in a situation where there's inherent potential conflict. So, if you're gonna make a decision, if somebody's gonna do it, please make your policy decision, but this and/or, I'm not, or, I'm not comfortable with, because I don't want to be in any debate about who should do this. So, please, whatever you want to do, make your decision one way or the other, please.
Councilor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps we would be best in, in not looking at a overall rules and regs for what we're gonna be doing here, but I think each individual consideration for any kind of review should be looked at individually and separately, and not collectively. So, therefore, I think that, whereas in the previous, there may have been a counselor who has sought review, and that was done for a particular reason, I'm assuming, this, I think, is probably best served by the town manager, and there may be other situations in the future where we look at and handle individually as well. There may be also a counselor review, and we have to determine that basically through a vote, and I think that that's what, that's what this thing says, it says, "Vote."
Councilor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I appreciate the good discussion that we're having here tonight, to complement the extensive discussion that we carried out in subcommittee. And, really quickly, I had my reservations when we discussed this, and I think that I ended up seconding the motion in the interest of progress, but I also remain convinced that we're putting the cart before the horse until we have a final resolution drafted. I'm voting no on this. I hope someone else will come out and say which way they're voting, so that we can continue and move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Councilor DePetro.
Madam Chair, and a question for you, and the vice chair, being the most, I would think, senior and most informed. Can this body seek counsel? Can this body seek counsel regarding anything-
By vote of the council.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm, that's, we're the executive board.
Yeah. Is this resolution coming from subcommittee going to be a decision of council at the end of the day?
Eventually, yes.
So, why are we having this discussion? Madam Chair.
Because I'm going according to the rules. Thank you for asking that. Councilor Carrasco.
I will also be voting no.
Okay. Councilor McKenzie.
I, too, will be voting no.
We need to, this is very irregular, and on the-
Remove the question.
Well, the question is-
At the moment, there is no second for the amendment, so the amendment's not irrelevant, unless there is going to be one.
So, we have a motion on the floor to move the question.
Second.
So, no more discussion is closed, on, debate is closed, on the vote to move the question. So, we'll do a roll call on moving the question.
So, we're to move the question, so we can do no more discussion.
Yeah, it hasn't been amended.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
No.
This is to move the question.
Oh.
This is to move the question.
No, let's continue discussion.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
No.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor DePetro?
Yes.
Councilor McKenzie?
No.
Six yes, three no, to move the question.
So, discussion is closed, and now we're gonna take a vote on the main motion, and again, the motion is just to vote that I seek legal review for the future general government subcommittee's recommended resolution regarding landfill expansion. So, that's already, we've already got it, I'm just rereading it, so that after all this time, the question is moved, there's no discussion, I'm sorry.
Will you please re-read it?
Yep. The question is, that's on the floor, vote that the council chair seek legal review of the future general government subcommittee's recommended resolution regarding landfill expansion. That's the question on the table. Roll call, please.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
No.
Councilor Steves?
No, it's premature.
Councilor O'Clair?
No.
Councilor Carrasco?
No.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor DePetro?
Yes.
Councilor McKenzie?
No.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Four yes, five no.
Motion doesn't pass, so if we decide to do legal review in the future, we'll come up with something else. All right, moving on. Thank you, though, for very good discussion. Agenda number 18, vote to send the town manager, vote to send Town Manager Ron Sanangelo written notice notifying him that we are not renewing his employment contract entered into June 16th, 2015, and stating this council's intent to negotiate a new contract for continued services.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, you have a second?
Yeah.
Discussion, Councilor Nash?
I'll be voting no.
We really need to read the rules on the landfill. Counselor DePetro, then Councilor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this question has been a contention with a few counselors. I would hope that everybody's under the understanding. We all know that the town manager got a favorable view from this council, and he may be the best thing since sliced bread, but it's a matter of having only two weeks to have the opportunity to sit down and review this contract, which at least needs some wording changes, and nothing, nothing more than that, as far as what could be gained from sitting down and looking at this, when in a couple of weeks, we wouldn't have the opportunity again.
Right.
Nothing against Ron.
Exactly.
Again, Mother Teresa, or the best guy in the world, it would be unfair, it would be a remiss of this council not to take advantage of the several weeks we have to take a peek at this again.
Right.
And to read anything more into that than there, than I think some counselors have, that's certainly not my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My feeling on this is probably what Counselor DePetro is thinking that I'm thinking, and that is, that I do not understand at all why we would look to renegotiate a contract when our town manager has a contract that's going to last for a full year, and then, as an option for a second year, he got a favorable review. I don't understand why we're even bringing this up to begin with. I think that, since he got a favorable review from most of the town counselors, I think that we should just continue to go the path of the contract that he has for this year, and the extension for the following year, and support him, show that we support our town manager for the good job that he is doing, and not to confuse the issue with any kind of renegotiation. I think that that, number one, kind of puts the town manager in a very uncomfortable position. I don't think that that's really what we want to do. I also think that it causes a, causes a confusion, we have enough confusion in our town with our school system, we don't need to add to it with our town council system as well. We have a good man in place, let's not worry, let's keep the man, and let's not even discuss this any further. That's my feeling. So, I will be voting, however it's put together here, not to write a notice for him, but to continue.
All set?
Thank you very much.
Councilor Carrasco.
Yeah, for, just, I just, I want to just address a couple of things here. I understand that Counselor DePetro said he's only had this for two weeks, but we've had a town manager's contract for two years, so.
Point of clarification, he didn't say we've only had, he says we only have a few weeks, because there's the one-year option, is what he's referring to.
Okay, because I didn't hear him right, so, because we've had his employment contract for over two years, he's been here with us, and for the last two years, he's received favorable recommendation with raises from all but two counselors, and tonight, one of those two, one of those counselors is the chair, and we find an item on tonight's agenda that is new, never been discussed, or agreed upon by this council. Counselor Steve stated during the election of the chair that the chair only puts items that have been discussed by subcommittee or agreed upon by this council, and neither of that happened. This is what I feel completely political, motivated, since the town manager has not bowed down to the request of certain counselors, and he cannot be controlled, and again, I repeat, controlled, this is where this is coming from. I will not support this. His contract clearly states that we have a time to negotiate, this is, I think, premature, and if we do not come into an agreement, he has a one-year extension. Again, why not give the man an extension when he's gonna receive favorable recommendations? It does not make sense that we are voting publicly, writing a notice that we are not renewing his employment contract. This is a witch hunt, because what I feel is that if we do not come into negotiations, what's gonna happen? He's gonna have six months to look for a job? Because, you know, negotiations is a back-and-forth. So, if we become and start negotiating with our town manager, and those that are negotiating do not want to agree to his terms, so now, at the end of next year, he's without a job. That's really unfair. He has an option to renew, I don't understand why we're not using that, even if we're lacking time. We're lacking time, give him another year. He has not had an unfavorable recommendation, he's only had a favorable recommendation for the last two years, except from two counselors.
I'm gonna do a point of clarification. You're absolutely wrong, because the, even my review is considered favorable, it's out of five, and when you're two-nine, you're favorable, you're average. I've not given an unfavorable, I've given average, and even, I believe you referred to potentially another counselor, who's a little bit lower, but I believe still right there at the average mark. So, I'm just going to point that out for clarification. Thank you. All right, moving to other lists. Are you finished, Councilor Carrasco?
I'm done.
Counselor Steves, you're next.
I wanted to read two things. One is the text of the proposed letter, which is, and I'm making this clear, this is something that we haven't decided on, that's what, that's why we're discussing this, which says, pursuant to section fourteen-
We've agreed on this.
Huh?
Please, let him finish, he has the floor.
I said, we haven't, we, that's why, that's why we're debating this question, whether we want to do this or not. That's why it's in the-
You said, we agreed on this.
No, I did not, I said, we have not agreed on this. We have not agreed on this, we haven't, we, that's why it's on the agenda to debate this. The question, the proposed letter states, pursuant to section fourteen of your employment agreement, which took effect August 17th, 2015, we, the council, the Town Council of Southbridge, by majority vote on this date, if it happens, have decided not to renew the current contract on which you are working. We do, however, wish to negotiate for you, with you, for continued services as our town manager. In that light, we invite you to meet with us in the hopes that we can reach a mutually beneficial agreement that addresses certain concerns some counselors have with the current contract. Okay? That's why it's on the agenda. And the section that that refers to is section fourteen, which says, non-renewal of agreement. It says, if the council decides not to renew this agreement at its termination, the council shall give the town manager written notice at least one year in advance of its intent not to renew this agreement. If the council fails to give such written notice, this agreement and its terms and conditions shall be extended for an additional one-year period. Okay? That particular section, in the original version before it was approved, said, if the board does not give notice of non-renewal, and the parties fail to negotiate a successor contract by the scheduled termination date of this agreement, this agreement and its terms and conditions shall be extended for an additional one-year period, which, that last sentence was struck back when we originally approved the contract. And a couple of months ago, and I don't remember the exact date, the issue, why this is coming up tonight, and why it hasn't gone to subcommittee, is the fact that the next council meeting is after that one-year period commences. We have to bring it up within, we have to bring it up at least one year in advance, and that one year, then our next meeting is the 14th. Okay? The one-year period, because of the fact that we changed the contract a couple of months ago to back it up a week, is now August 11th. Because, because of the way the pay periods were for this past fiscal year, that's the only reason it's on. And I have said that in the past, that I have no desire to get rid of Ron. I have no desire to do that. I don't see a council, I don't see anywhere close to a council that was ready to do so. This is not about firing Ron, period. It's not. That's certainly not my intent.
All right, yourself?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilor Manah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you for clarifying. I believe I gave a fair review, and it was average on both of my reviews, actually. I didn't sugarcoat things. There are some, some things that I, you know, we all have issues. I didn't see the town manager doing some things properly, going by charter and whatnot, so I pointed those things out. I mean, I'm not gonna sugarcoat, I'm gonna be honest, and he got an average review from me, and anybody could read it, it's a public, public document. And also, this, this would be a good time for us to all talk about the contract and whatnot, and to renegotiate things. As I recall, last year, during one of his reviews, there was a real sticking point where it wasn't really clear on if he should be evaluated on performance, or just on goals and objectives, because I believe it says, in the bylaw, in the bylaws or in the charter, it's one of the two, that it says that he's to have a performance review, but in the contract, it says he's to be evaluated on goals and objectives. So, there was, there was a huge conflict there, and that really needs to be cleared up, and there's just, you know, take the vagueness out and let it be direct. I mean, I'm not out to get anybody fired by any means, but I would like to, you know, talk about this, and get some things more clear in the contract, so we don't have these conflicts in the future. I mean, because that one conflict did cost the taxpayers' money, because we had to get a legal opinion on it. So, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All set, Councilor Manah?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I have a question through you to whoever can answer this. Who wrote this document?
I did.
Okay.
It wasn't the council.
So-
It wasn't me.
So I have a real serious issue here because I have a document that was put in my packet on Thursday that I had never seen before that states that it is from the town council to town manager Ron Sanangelo with my name on it and a place to sign. This has never been -- I have the floor, thank you. This has never gone through a single subcommittee. This has never been brought before council. I believe that, you know, both yourself, Counselor Steve's, and Chairwoman Clements were very active in subcommittees last year. To put a date on this and say, "We only have two weeks in order to get this done," is absolutely unfair. If somebody had a problem with his contract, which there's never been a problem brought up to council about the contract, goals and objectives and the performance review are completely separate issues from the contract, and the contract allows for us to be somewhat flexible with that. Excuse me. So you unilaterally made this document and decided to bring this up without speaking to the council in any form whatsoever in public meeting, and this is unacceptable. This needs to never, ever happen again. This is not what you -- you don't represent me.
I'm not saying anybody does.
Thank you.
You represent yourself. I don't expect you to represent me either. This is a proposal. That's it.
Hang on.
Not approved. I know that.
Thank you. Counsel Mackenzie?
Yes, I understand now that this document was prepared by our vice chair. I haven't seen it. I wasn't privy to it. And I don't even know if my name is on it as well. I don't know.
It is.
It is. It's all looking at packet. It's in your packet.
You got it at the same time everyone else did.
Okay. And I did pick up my packet and I did look through it. I didn't notice the particular piece in there. But on the same token, I don't think that we are prepared at this time to make this kind of a decision at all. I also think that -- I think that it's inappropriate. I think it's basically wrong to have this even -- I would have liked to have gotten some kind of a meeting to discuss it. I respect you, sir, and I have no problem with you. On the same token, I do have a problem with this issue. And I believe that while I think your intention was correct or was with concern, I'll say it that way, however, I also think that it could actually be viewed as a negative approach to our town manager. I think we need to stand by our town manager because of the job that he has done for the past two years, for the anticipation of the job that he's going to do this coming year. And I think he's entitled to not only that, which we're going to give him, but I also think that he's entitled to that additional year. If the town manager was given a year that he has, how much time, how many positions are open as a town manager or as a town mayor or anything else that he could go to? It takes -- it could be far longer than six months. It could take over a year. And what are we supposed to do? What is he supposed to do in the meantime, being under the gun, being concerned about his career, what's going to happen to him? I just don't see this at all. And I really feel that we need to -- I think we need to scrub this thing. Thank you.
Counsel Carrasco?
Yeah, number one, this document, technically, for all disclosure, the public saw this at the same time I saw it. Okay? Because it became a public record when it went into our pockets. And I knew nothing about this. Number two, we've had special meetings, countless special meetings, countless. We need to schedule a meeting because we're running out of time, countless of times for the last five years that have been on council. And truthfully, this should have been talked about in executive session because this is a personnel matter in contract. Number one, this is a slap in the face regardless. If, when you look at this, that we are not renewing his employment contract.
That's what the contract says.
That's what we're doing. We're not renewing his employment contract.
That's the only way to renegotiate it. That's what the contract says.
My question is, number one, why couldn't we have a meeting, a special meeting, to discuss this? So we could have known the direction that our new leadership wanted to go in. Because this is very strange that this is the first agenda item that this new leadership puts out. This is without even the council knowing anything about. This is -- it's just not fair. We've had special meetings before. We've held numerous conversations. We could have did that. To put it on the agenda just like this, blindsiding all other councilors, is wrong. It's just wrong. You don't do that. You guys constantly say, "We all have the same power. We all have the same information." Well, guess what? Not in this case.
Point of clarification. We can go into executive session to discuss negotiations. We cannot do negotiations on a contract in public. Or we can, if the town manager would like to do that. Right. If he would like to do it and to vet all -- any discussion and not give him the privacy, we could certainly do it right here in public. Actually, thought executive session was the more appropriate place to vet things and concerns in regard to contract and whether or not things are being followed or not followed. This was actually the more respectful way to go about it, as has been discussed. And numerous concerns have been made over a numerous amount of time. And that's all I'm going to say on that area because I'm trying to be respectful on those points. So it could have also been that councilors could have done a letter privately and sent something, you know, a majority to hire and a supermajority to fire, which I have always supported. I am not personally seeking the firing of this town manager. I state that publicly. I stated that in an email to a letter we all received, Ms. Alari, I believe. And that's public. I did send -- I made sure everybody was aware that I thanked this person who was concerned about this agenda item. And then I said that I agree that he does a good job with the citizens and in many other areas of the town. It's always important as councilors that we take all factors into consideration when working toward the best interest of the community. I believe I speak for the majority of the council in saying that we hope to negotiate a new contract to continue services with Mr. Sanangelo, and that will be most beneficial to Southbridge and all its citizens. We are the governing body. We are the executive committee. Contracts, negotiations are part of our job even -- and if this was a six-month, not a 12-month, we wouldn't be discussing this until January. Just falls right after the election. And that really is a terrible thing for, not just --
For everybody.
For everybody. So moving on, Counsel Manna?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Through you. In regards --
Citizens, speak.
I'm going to let the council speak first.
Everybody.
This is a council issue. I'm going to let the council speak first.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Through you. In regards to what we received in our agenda and our packets, I mean, we've all had this since Thursday. We all have email. Countless times I've seen emails go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth in regards to certain things. Not this time though on this. This is the first time I hear about nobody knowing what was going on until tonight, but everybody got their packets Thursday. You know, you had all weekend to look at this. If you had an issue with it, you should have contacted the chair or whoever. That's just, you know, I find it interesting that, you know... I didn't see any emails go out on this. Had it been done last year or something similar to this last year, I would have saw a ton of emails go out on it. So I just like, I don't understand why people just wait until the cameras are on before they bring up issues and, I'm sorry, to me, it's like they're grandstanding. There -- nobody wants a town manager fired. We want to talk about the contract. And if that's how it falls, you know, then that's how it falls, the first council meeting. Is there time to have a special meeting to discuss this so we don't discuss it, you know, anymore at length tonight? So it can go down to a subcommittee or maybe a special town council meeting?
We can. And it's still going to be discussed the same in public, so yeah.
Right. I mean, so why don't we just, why don't we do a special meeting, huh?
No.
Monday through Friday.
Because I can do it that day.
I mean, be able on Saturdays and Sundays.
Damage done. Okay. You're asking for -- so let's -- anybody, all right, let me --
She's reading.
Counsel Claire, you have the floor next. No, yeah, Counsel Claire.
I'm done. Thank you.
I just wanted to briefly to respond to her directly. I just wanted to point out that Counsel Claire and I have been emailing back and forth on this issue. We've been kind of debating it over. But it doesn't violate the open meeting laws because it's just the two of us. But that's one of the issues that's a concern actually about what council managers said is that once you start getting to the point of creating a quorum, that violates the meeting law. So you have to be very careful about debating issues on email. You can't do it, basically. If it's just two people, that's it. Pretty much that's about all you can do.
All right. Wait. Counsel Claire, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I actually had a couple of things that I wanted to say, but I'd like to use the floor to ask Mr. Zotos what he has to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristin. I almost forgot what I was going to say. Anyway, here I am. Hi, everybody. So if I'm going to speak, can everybody maybe pay attention or we're going to text? Can I ask some questions to the chair, please? I have a question for a couple of -- three questions for you.
I can try to answer your question.
First of all, I was at a meeting Wednesday. I was at a general government meeting Wednesday. You were there. There was eight councilors there. The town manager was there. We were all there for two and a half hours. I stood and filmed. Why didn't this come up? Why didn't we even hinted it? It wasn't on your mind?
It was on my mind, but not as an agenda item for a council meeting. On Thursday morning, Counselor Steve's and I met with the town manager and we were discussing lots of things. And after that meeting, Counselor Steve's and I were meeting for a coup -- we met for a long time about the agenda. And one of the things that we had talked about prior to the election even, well, actually for six months now, I would say, not just that, but with others, many different concerns.
I didn't ask you that.
And so the deadline came up.
Why wasn't it discussed in that general government meeting?
It was an agenda item. And I didn't think it was going to go -- I wasn't thinking about the deadline at that moment at that subcommittee meeting. That was Counselor Steve's subcommittee meeting. And we were discussing a resolution to the landfill.
So two and a half hours, you couldn't even let us know that it was an idea?
It was an agenda. I'm not going to debate this with you, sir.
Well, to me, it sounds like somebody did have a secret meeting because there seems to be a secret meeting that I missed. There wasn't a secret meeting? You're sure?
Not secret at all. We were very much visible to everybody, sir. This is our meeting, our first meeting as chair and vice chair, unlike my last year.
I got one more question. Why didn't it go to subcommittee? Because I think you invented it has to go in subcommittee first. So why didn't this go to some kind of subcommittee first?
I can only speak from my thought process in this one, to be honest with you.
I'm asking you both of you.
Could you allow us to please?
I'll be honest with you. I have never done --
I can't hear you.
I personally can say I have never done, been in a process like this before. So I've -- we've never, we have not had to deal with this kind of an issue or even contemplate this kind of issue while I'm on the council.
Sir, Mr. Zotos, if you don't let him answer, then you'll have to step away.
There is no formal process for doing this. You know, we're kind of honestly, as far as I'm seeing, we're kind of making it up as we go along. I can't speak for anyone else who may have seen long, something longer, but I don't know. I've never seen this done before.
Can I --
So maybe it should have gone to something, maybe it should have gone to some committee in the spring at some point.
Can I respond to you? Can I respond to that? What you just said?
That's all I can say.
So I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
From what you just said. I've been hearing a buzz about this since election day. So there was a buzz in town. The buzz was in town. I heard it. Everybody heard it. Everybody knew it. That's why we all came to you, Gus, and said, "Please, let's think about what we're doing." And you ignored us.
We are thinking.
Right. But it was because of that buzz. It was because of the buzz. So there was a buzz, so there was a meeting. If there was a buzz, there was a meeting. There's somebody talking about this.
Mr. Zotos, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, right.
Please ask a question and let the council answer.
Were you talking about this between the councilors before the election?
What?
Was this discussed before the election? She said there was something happened before the election. So you guys were talking about this before the election?
No. What I said was there are many things that were discussed before the election, concerns that would arise throughout the year on procedure and different things that happened in the town manager's purview.
Well, I believe, it's my opinion, that there's been some damage done already that can probably never be repaired. Damage has been done.
Absolutely.
And you have to be careful. And you have to go, you know, maybe the conventions in Boston, you can have people come in, you can go to seminars, you can visit other towns, you can talk to previous town managers, you can talk to previous councilors, you could talk to me. But it could have been discussed on a casual basis. And if there's anything someone doesn't know how to be a counselor, that's a very poor excuse for doing something so embarrassing as this that you're not experienced. It's really embarrassing. But the damage has been done. And now, if I were you guys, and I'm not, but I wish I was tonight more than ever, that I wish you could repair, try to repair that damage tonight by backing off, removing this from the table and from discussion, and let's go have a beer after the meeting and mend this. That's how you mend this. You go have a drink somewhere and you forget about it. And you talk about the great things that we're all going to try to do here, that we get a chance, 24 meetings a year. And if you waste one meeting, you're behind, all right? We only take 24 baby steps a year to get to where we are. And if I were you, I would get this off the table, let's go have a drink and worry about the 23 meetings we got left to try to fix everything in this town. Needs some eyes and some thought and some repair. Everything, okay? We're not doing that well. Everything needs repair. Everything could be this much better. And to do this --
But you also, Mr. Zotos, your three minutes are up.
Now, to do this is a real damage, and the only way to repair it is to work at repairing it. I see an empty room, okay? And I've been seeing an empty room for two years. And an issue like this, when we had a real newspaper and we had a working council, there'd be 500 people in this room and there'd be a line out the door. And then we'd get to the bottom of this secret meeting stuff. But you've got a chance to fix it. And I'm looking at the councilors I love, and I love you all, really. So let's do it. And let's get this train back on the track and get moving forward because, you know, we're all citizens of Southbridge and we do all have the same power. We voted. And we all have the same power. Nobody has no -- we've seen secret moves. And when people start off as a council, they get rubbish rules.
You have three minutes.
And they say a lot of things. But once you get the power --
Ma'am chair, point of order, please.
Excuse me? Once you get power, it can corrupt you, and I wouldn't let it because this is corruption.
Your point has been made, Mr. Zotos.
It has? Well, thank you so much. It was a pleasure being here this evening.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Counsel Claire passed. Counsel Mackenzie?
Madam Chair, I do believe that we're pretty much rushing and ramrodding this concept, and I'm not in favor of it, not at all. I think that it should be, I understand the time limits, but I don't understand why we're being pressured with time limits, when we do have a very clear option, and that very clear option is that our town manager has an additional year, and then, after that additional year, he has an option, he has another year. He has this year coming, where he's serving, and he has, and he has an extra year, and I think that we should just honor that, and not, I think we're wasting a lot of time. I don't want to see our town manager, number one, I don't want to see him so uncomfortable, so distraught over the lack of support of the counselors. I think we have a responsibility to take a stand for him, indicate to him that we are behind him 100%, and to me, the way this is worded, vote to send the town manager Ron Sanangelo written notice notifying him we are not renewing his employment contract, that is cruel.
That's what it says.
That's in his contract.
That's what it says in the contract? That's the only way to do it?
For language.
I don't agree, I'm sorry, I do not agree.
I know, having looked at some other employment contracts through my job, I have seen other town manager contracts that actually have the town manager come forward and indicate that they want to stay, and that starts the process. Part of the problem is, is that this, our contract doesn't have that. It might be easier if it did, but it isn't, and what it says specifically, that this, this is the only way to bring it forward for negotiation.
Sir, I don't believe we need to bring it forward.
That's, that's a different issue. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to determine here, is whether we want to bring it forward or not.
With respect to you.
That's the point of, that's the point of the agenda item.
Yeah, I understand.
Do we want to negotiate it or not? That's it.
No.
That's the, that's the whole point.
Okay, Counselor Carrasco.
I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Claire, because she allowed Mr. Zotos, but she has some points, and I, please keep me on the list.
Thank you, and, um, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So, this agenda item doesn't say, negotiate possible contract revisions, this agenda item states, vote to send town manager Ron Sanangelo written notice notifying him that we are not renewing his employment contract entered into June 16, 2015, and stating this council's intent to negotiate a new tract, new contract for continued services. We have no plan, we have no prior discussion besides what you've two have apparently been talking about together since the six months. This isn't sparking debate, this is, this is putting something out there in the public and to the town manager stating, we're not going to renew your contract, and hopefully, the council can come together and come up with a better solution or a better contract, without having anything drafted, without having any idea of what that might mean. So, is our employee then supposed to wait around in limbo? It's, it's very clear what was done here, and why it was done, and it's not because, it's, it's not because we wanted to negotiate a contract.
Yes, it was.
The intent's clear, thank you.
I know that's, I know, I know my intent was clear, was to negotiate a contract, period, that's all. I have stated repeatedly that I have no interest in firing Ron.
Should I add a conversation?
Repeatedly.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see, is this Counselor? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's through you. I'm a little confused on a couple of things. First of all, I respect what Counselor Claire said in regards to, she didn't know anything about this paper until she saw it in the packet, and then I got Counselor Steves stating that they discussed this, so I'm just a little confused on that. Secondly, Citizen Member Zotos said that this didn't even go through subcommittee, well, technically, nothing really has to go through subcommittee, it's just vetted there, it can all be vetted here, which I totally, I, I think we should just do away with subcommittees and just vet everything out up here, that's why it's more public and whatnot. And thirdly, did we come up with a date, can we have a special meeting to discuss this, and, so we can stop discussing it and get on with business?
Sure. And, just, if, if anyone is remotely interested, I did type up some talking points for the employment, things that are concerning for me. As due diligence for the community, we are in charge of a contract that puts the community up for another three years, at $135,000, $137,000 a year, 2% increases, and I, it may be uncomfortable, and it may not be something we enjoy doing, but it's our responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that the contract is vetted, and is good for everybody, not just comfortable for everybody, but good for everybody. These are just some, I was, wasn't sure if I needed to use them or not tonight, or to just to say, you're questioning as to what the legality, I have concerns with section one, section three, section three, section four, I mean, section five, excuse me, section six, section eight, section nine, these are just concerns in the contract, these were things to discuss in private, as I said, I would prefer to do it in private. And, for a point of clarification again, with the non-renewal agreement, the language that Counselor Steves used, because he was very careful with using the contract word, specifically says, if the council decides not to, the council should, excuse me, let me make sure I'm very proper, if the council decides not to renew this agreement at its termination, the council shall give the manager written notice at least one year in advance of its intent not to renew this agreement. So, therefore, the wording that you see there, if the council fails to give, then the agreement and its terms shall be extended for an additional one-year period. So while Counselor McKenzie says we should just let it go for that one year, some of the terms, some people who have come to me, and others, have concerns, some of the concerns right there, that I passed out, that I have, to be discussed, but trying not to discuss them in open form, but if that's what the town manager doesn't mind, then that's what we will do, I got the impression that we would prefer to do it in private. So, I pass those out, let's see, was there, did I have any else? What did you say, Counselor Steves?
I had just a response to Monique Manners, or to Counselor Manners, if that's, if that's okay, or I can re-
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, just, because you said that you were confused about the emails that, that Counselor Steves and I had, I was included in an email chain by a citizen, asking about this agenda item, and seeing as how I didn't have any kind of, you know, previous knowledge of this, and I found out, you know, with the citizenry of the town, I, Gus, or Counselor, or, yeah, Counselor Steves and I have gone back and forth to, to really try and answer some questions, why this is coming up, and what this is, because he is apparently the, one of the driving forces behind it, and he was a source of information for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, um, I'm, Madam Chair, I'm curious, what were the, what was the purpose of the town manager's evaluation? If we're looking at the concerns of some people in discussion, aren't we supposed to be looking at our evaluation? And if the evaluation is a positive, then why do not, why do we not continue and look to go forward with things, rather, rather than to say that there are some concerns that some people had, and what we would rather do is discuss these concerns in private, in a meeting? I, to me, the concerns were, were squashed with the evaluation being so positive.
If, if, there's two different things there. One is the evaluation itself, which is a public record, and which all of us got copies of, and I don't, I don't, was that ever put on the web? I don't know if it ever is.
I'm not sure yet if it has.
I don't know if it's going to be, but, but that, but those are two different issues. You've got your evaluation, which is based on goals and objectives, and then you've got the contract, the language itself, which is completely, they're really two completely separate doc, two completely separate things. Whether, again, this has nothing to do with this evaluation, okay? There are certain things that come up in the evaluations that people may be concerned about, or they may not be, okay, that are based on goals and objectives. The evaluation, I mean, the contract, this particular, the contract issues are more, in this case, are about more about the language of the contract itself, the document that, that governs the, the process by which the town manager works with the council. It, it has nothing to do with how well he does his job. I mean, I was one of, I mean, I gave him a good review too, and I, I commend him for many of the things that he has done, and I have some concerns with some of the things that he has done. I don't personally have some concerns about some of the things that Counselor Clemens has put on this, this talking points page here, but I have some concern about some of them. And, they're really two very different processes.
Okay, if I may read, Madam Chair, through you. I'm asking, since the town manager has a year left on his contract, and the possibility of an extension on that contract, why are we discussing his contract now, when we have such a favorable point? We can discuss this during the year, for the next, after two years. We don't have to be concerned about his contract now. You, you know, the way it's being presented, we've got two weeks, and if we don't make the right decision, we're going to be in trouble, we're going to, we're going to be making a mistake here. There is no need or no necessity for rushing a contract, we have a year and a half.
Let me just point out, salary, by the way, is based on, is, that's where you get your salary increase on a positive performance evaluation, which is why I say he hasn't gotten a below evaluation, he's actually gotten his salary increases for his performance evaluation.
Madam Chair, I respect what you're saying, but his 2% would go even into the additional year, so we don't even have to be concerned about his salary right now.
That wasn't the point either. Counselor McKenzie, have you read his contract, top to front and back?
Oh, actually, I have, thank you.
Interesting. Counselor Carrasco.
You, you mentioned, Madam Chair, that you met with the town manager and, and had a meeting about the agenda. During that meeting, did he know about this agenda item, or did you come back after?
I came back after, as you well know, Mr. Carrasco.
I'm asking you.
No, no, I know, but you're asking that question, I understand what you're asking the question about, Mr. Carrasco. Counselor Carrasco, excuse me. Yes, I came back when the agenda item was set, and I went into the town manager's office, and I said, there's an agenda item that it will, it affects you, and I would like to talk to you about it before the meeting. So, I said, don't read any more into it than it is, but it's going, it's on the agenda, and I didn't want you to be blindsided, I want you to know about that. And he sat there, and he smiled, he looked at, and he goes, well, yeah, I would expect that we'd be talking about the contract renegotiation, I said, right, we would negotiate a new contract with you. And he said, I don't have a problem with that, that's what he said to me when we sat there for a few minutes, and, then I left. I said, okay, well, it's going to be on for Monday on number 18, and that's where I left it. Had, he had, he has a smile on his face at that moment, and he, and that was, and I called Counselor Steves, and I told him I'd spoken with the town manager, and that I told him that the agenda item was on.
Now, you, you made a, an assumption tonight, that I knew about this, that's why I'm asking you the question. So, let's not assume anything, that's why I'm asking you, okay? Number two, can we know who these people are that had these concerns? You know, because, again, for the last two years, we've seen favorable recommendations, correct, I stood corrected, you, you were correct, everybody gave him an above average or an average score, you are correct. But, at no point in time, has ever, we've said, you know what, maybe we should hold Ron in, and let's talk about his contract, as there's seven sections that you have concern about, and others have. Again, who are these people? Who are these people? Put it out there, you guys talk about transparency, you guys talk about not having these secret meetings, we didn't know about this.
Secret meetings, we've stood outside and talked to other people.
Okay, for the last nine years that you've been on council, you've, you've tooted that horn, you've said, let's keep it transparent, let's keep it, let's keep it open. This is not transparent. Blindsided, he knew about it, I'm glad he knew about it, but the rest of us, who's, who constantly we are reminded, we are his bosses, we should have known about this. This, regardless of what happens tonight, this has damaged his reputation, this has damaged his image, this, this was a poor choice, we should have did this privately, we should have did this, we should have had a discussion, because this is not fair for anybody. And I'm not speaking anymore.
Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. With past managers, was this ever worded in this way, in this fashion, that we are not renewing, instead of talking about negotiations? In all of the years that Chris Clark was here, and all of the extensions of his contract, were, was this even close to any of the wording that was on those agendas?
Chris Clark left, so.
Well, he had a contract when he was here.
His wording, it's the same, ah, I don't want to, trying really not to, yeah, go ahead, you want to answer something? Yeah, I'm trying not to, oh, you can't?
I wasn't here, I don't know.
So I have Chris Clark's contract, which is the contract that was, we're supposed to be mirroring when we did the town manager's contract, and the things that we discussed in executive sessions, I, I cannot say certain things.
I'm asking, I'm asking about an agenda item that was made public to the people that would state that the town council was deciding not to renew the employment contract for Chris Clark or any other managers, and what, what kind of precedent are we setting here?
We're taking an option, Counselor Claire, that is in the contract, if we choose to, to negotiate another contract, that's what we're doing.
That's it.
Any other? Okay, Mr. Town Manager, I'll let you speak, given that, I, for the record, it's a council decision, but I will let you speak.
Well, thank you, since it involves me, that's very kind of you. Um, this has been interesting, listening to all this, you know, a month ago, I was pretty clear that I was looking to have my contract renewed, was enjoying the challenges of, of being the town manager of this town, had felt very positive about its future, and truthfully, was excited about the successes we've had over the last two years, and working, frankly, with a team of people that I just think are extraordinary. When I talk about many department heads and the staff that they have in this town, and the work that we accomplished with little or no resources, I'm just amazed at what you guys do, and, and very appreciative of it. You know, I felt comfortable that, that we have to make all these difficult decisions. We've had to deal with the Casella issue, and the millions of dollars of lost revenue, we've had lawsuit issues that are just unbelievable, you know, we're talking into millions of dollars, we've had all kinds of, of major accomplishments, I believe, in redoing the buildings and creating onto lighting, we've become a green community, we have a great facilities management plan, we've improved our park and recreation, I go on and on and on about the accomplishments of this, two years, and I give that credit to my team, the people that work for me who've done an extraordinary job. And, and I've enjoyed the challenges, and I got to admit that, you know, some people, the challenges of the fact that we don't have enough money to pave roads, or, or trying to figure out how to get off the cell money, could keep a lot of town managers awake at night. But truthfully, you know, I felt comfortable with all those issues, and I felt frankly that, to make those tough decisions, you got to come out, and you got to have people that, that stand behind you. You have to have people that have your back when you're making those decisions, because they're hard to do, and truthfully, I'm not perfect, nor do I know anyone who is, and some of these difficult decisions, the choices, may not come out the way I like them to, and they may be negative, and I need to feel comfortable that, that this council has my back, and that it's not somebody looking to, to put a knife in my back, so to speak, or to, or to, to look for things that I do wrong, because frankly, I like everybody else to do some things wrong, and I have to prioritize those efforts to try to make sure that we don't make mistakes on big issues, and if I make mistakes, hopefully they're around small issues that, that don't cost a lot of money. So going into a month ago, I was very comfortable, even with the challenges here in this town, and moving forward and talking about a future contract, because I felt very comfortable with the leadership of, of the board, and frankly, generally with the board as well. I knew there was going to be a lot of dynamics as this board was looking at the, the leadership discussion about who was going to be leadership and stuff, and truthfully, as, as I've expressed to some of the counselors, I've had my concerns about how that would impact me. I got to be honest, in fact, you know, I, I was excited when I got a good review from pretty much everybody, I mean, I got average from a couple of members, but on balance, the reviews were extraordinary, it was a 3.94, where three is average and four is above average in all duties, and that was, in my opinion, really pleased by that response. And, and four of the review, four of the counselors gave me reviews above four, three of them above four and a half, and one like 4.29. And even tonight, in listening to the discussion, I've heard, for the most part, all the good things about my performance and stuff, but I got to admit that I no longer feel that this council has my back, and tonight is a perfect example of that. I can't believe that this discussion is even occurring tonight. The truth is, is that the contract absolutely reads that if they don't take action by if they don't take action by my anniversary date of August 19th, they automatically would get a one-year extension in my existing contract. A contract that was negotiated by most of the members of the council that are here before you today, who voted for that contract. In the two years, I haven't heard a single concern about that particular contract. It's true that on Thursday, I was discussing, discussing the agenda with the chairpersons, the chairwoman and the vice chairman about the agenda upcoming, and there was no discussion about this on the agenda. The chair did come back about 3:00 in the afternoon asking if she could have an appointment with me. I was scheduled for some work, but she came in, you know, anyway, and she handed the agenda to me and said, "You're on the agenda. We put this on the agenda, myself and Councilor Steves, and we want you to know on it, you know, I don't want you to be blindsided. It's on the agenda." Now, in truth, I wasn't asked what I thought about it being on the agenda, or I was never discussed with me about it being on the agenda. It was just there. And truthfully, I laughed. I just laughed, and I smiled. She's correct, because I thought, I wasn't surprised by it, because I felt that this was going to be coming in one form or another. This had been gossiped around the town for, God, a good month that I've heard this concerns about what was going to happen to me with the leadership of this town council. So, so let me make it clear. And I offer a friendly amendment to the resolution on the table. And truthfully, I had hoped to stay here. But the friendly amendment is this, is that, I'm going to put it this way, and I'm going to put it really this way, Claire. And you truthfully, you know, all day long, or the last two days, I've done nothing but have employees come up to me to tell me how bad they felt that this process was occurring, that they thought it was wrong. I've had citizens write me notes about how wrong they thought this process would be. I've had a number of town councillors who tend to like my performance come to me and talk about how bad this was. And truthfully, it has been embarrassing. It has been emotional to look at the employees and say, "I can't explain this." Yeah, you know, this contract's being terminated. And the fact of this is, by eliminating this one-year extension, it does mean that every day that we're negotiating a contract is a less, is one day less that I can negotiate or try to find a new job. So, it limits my ability to move. And town manager jobs, I'm sorry, they take four months to a year to get. That's just the process. So, every day this negotiation goes on, makes it more difficult, and kind of puts me at risk if I don't start applying for positions. So, so I don't want, you know, I need to feel comfortable going into future decisions, that these difficult decisions, that people have my back. I don't feel that way, and I'm sorry, I guess, you know, it's funny how, and I've heard debate now for three days about this issue. And with all due respect, the chair vice chair didn't come to me to ask me my opinion on this. They put it on the agenda, with not so much of coming to me and saying, "Hey, what about this?" And that, that really, it's not what I would expect from, from a town council. So, to make it easier for those members that are concerned, I would ask that you amend the vote here. Vote to send Town Manager Ron Sanangelo written notice notifying him that we are not renewing his employment contract entered in June 16, 2015, period. I'm not asking for renewal of the contract. I don't want to work, given what I've been through this last couple of days. I do no, not longer feel comfortable. So, those that might have not been comfortable with my work here. And I told members of the council that this was going to be coming. So, this is not a big surprise. So, I'm letting you for, don't, please don't even discuss opening up negotiations, because I'm not interested, given what I'm going through here tonight. It's funny that everybody else has their opinion about how embarrassing this is. I'm hearing great things about my process. I've got two good reviews, and yet we're debating here about not renewing a future contract, but talking about, you know, eliminating my existing contract. So, I really don't think there needs to be any further discussion about this. The decision, quite frankly, is mine. The council has a right to its decision to discussion, but I think I made it clear what my position is. And to those of you that are happy about that, all the power to you. But that's, as far as I'm concerned, the discussion should end with this point. Having a discussion about my future in an open session with not so much as asking me what you think, or what I think about what my future could be? I've spent 25 years building my reputation in this industry, and I will not sit here and listen to people in any way defending my character. And that's, that's what I feel. That's the opinion I'm giving you tonight. And that's the end of this discussion. Move to the vote.
I understand why you feel the way you feel.
Because it's a political talking place here.
As I have said repeatedly, I have no desire to get rid of you.
Heard that.
And I've said repeatedly, and I wrote it in your evaluation. I am, I am glad that you've done a lot of the things that you have done. This isn't about, this is about, this is just about bringing some issues to this, for discussion. That's it. I don't want to get rid of you.
Problems been solved.
I have no desire to get rid of you. Never has, never have. I told you that before. It has always been the truth.
Then you shouldn't run this process or in the way that you do.
Council Mackenzie.
Yes, Madam Chair. I totally understand the feelings of our town manager.
I do too.
I think we all understand, or maybe we didn't understand, we understand now. And I would just want to say that a vote to agree to this notification, to me, a positive, to vote for that, to me, I mean, he's already, our town manager's already indicated, he's gone. But I think that if we show him support and that we are willing to be behind him and we are willing to back him, he would reconsider. I'm hoping that he would reconsider with the understanding that we are looking to support him, not deter him. So, I, I don't know if this, do we still have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Or has it been seconded?
I believe it has, yeah.
Then, and we've had plenty of discussion? I think our vote should be to support our town manager by eliminating this nonsense. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Council Mackenzie. Council Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With all due respect, Council Mackenzie, I don't think this is nonsense. I don't believe the town manager would hand a resignation in on TV without having something else lined up. That's the feeling I get, my gut instinct. I do not think that this, this was done in, in a malicious way at all. I believe that this was done according to the contract. And we, as a town council, would be doing a disservice to this community if we'd not least review the contract. We are going by what the contract says. Even if we just review it and it came back, okay, we don't have to change anything. Yes, I had concern. I had a concern, I brought it up. I just brought it up, and I brought it up when, his evaluation from last year. The charter and the bylaws state that his, his, um, his evaluation is based on performance. The contract just simply states that it's based on goals and objectives. So, the contract's not supposed to supersede the charter, but there was an argument on that. Taxpayer's money was spent on an attorney to get a, a, you know, a legal opinion on it. Why don't we just have a discussion on it? It's a discussion. It's in his contract. I don't think anybody was blindsided. And you know what? And I'm going to be perfectly honest with everybody. I knew nothing about this being on the agenda. When it was on the agenda, I asked the question, and I look at the contract. The contract states exactly what I was told, that it states that we have to give the town manager notice, that we want to review his contract, period. There's no deviation, there's no malicious intent in here. Oh, my gosh. Conspiracy, conspiracy, conspiracy. I'm just so tired of it. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Council Manna. Anybody else? Council Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I think I'm going to respect the town manager's wishes and not elaborate on my feelings on this any more than I already have. I've extended my thoughts to him personally. But I think, looking ahead, we've been seeing plenty of progress with Mr. Sanangelo, and I think it's time to get to the vote. Enough's enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, are you formally moving the question then?
I will move the question.
Second.
Roll call on moving the question.
Yeah.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councilor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
No.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Mackenzie?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
So, the motion on the table again is vote to send the town manager Ron Sanangelo written notice notifying him that we are not renewing his employment contract entered into June 16, 2015, and stating this council's intent to negotiate a new contract for continued services.
So moved.
It's already, I'm just rereading the motions since we...
Well, we talked so long on that.
Yeah, I know. And that's generally the procedure. Roll call.
Councilor Steves?
No.
Councilor O'Clair?
No.
Councilor Carrasco?
No.
Councilor Clements?
Yes.
Councilor DePietro?
Yes.
Councilor Mackenzie?
No.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Morales?
No.
Councilor Nash?
No.
Three yes, six no.
Motion does not pass. Thank you all very much. At that point, we now have councillors' forum.
Madam Chair, sorry, through you, before we get to councillors' forum, I would like to, since I was on the prevailing side of appointing Councilor Gusteves as vice chairman, I understand this will probably only be a symbolic movement, but I'm rescinding, I'm rescinding my vote for Councilor Steves as the vice chair of the council. Thank you.
I don't believe that's in order. We can review that. Thank you.
I rescinded my vote, we should revote.
I don't believe that's actually in order. I'd have to do a ruling on that.
That's not how you do it.
Yeah, you can, you can make a motion to...
I don't know.
Need to reconsider.
Yeah, we can, it's a reconsider, it's not... Give me a second, please.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Give me a couple of minutes, so we can sit and just enjoy the recess.
Are we just, no?
Did we?
We're not, she's just going to... It's removal, but not the same thing. It's not what it is. It's rescinding a vote on the prevailing side, but I know so she does, it applies to appointments. Yeah, I have a tab, I'm not sure which one it is. Rescinded motion.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes?
May I please repeat the request for a short break?
Oh, yeah.
Some of us need to use the restroom. Don't want to miss anything.
I just remind you that it's only a one, one hall.
Somebody's in there, may I have?
Five minutes.
Thank you.
And I'm going to refer to Robert's Rules of Order and the actions that cannot be rescinded, or, oops, sorry, my mic is off. The actions that cannot be rescinded or amended. And this is out of the Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, a book I've had for eight years. When a resignation has been acted upon, or a person has been elected to or expelled from membership or office, and the person was present or has been officially notified of the action, the only way to reverse an expulsion is to follow whatever procedure is prescribed by the bylaws for admission or reinstatement. Therefore, I rule against your point of order and your rescinding, I admit, because it's not allowed in the manner in which you're doing it. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to move on to councillors' forum. If that's, so, roll call. And we'll go with Council DePietro, starting this out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly not to belabor the issue, but this council, both in this setting and in subcommittee, I've been very, very pleased to work with. Great bunch of folks, and I hope that one issue doesn't put that good work asunder. Certainly, I believe, wholeheartedly, that the intent of the previous vote was not made out of malice. I don't believe it was made out of any reference to the town manager himself, but over wording in the existing contract, which there are. I certainly don't, wouldn't chase every item you have on this list. But, but the language is incorrect in some forms of the contract. And I think that's where the chair and vice chair were going with this. And I hope it's not going to be Mr. Schur's anything else. And I hope the town manager does, he certainly has a support, and I love working with him as well, both this forum and his office and his subcommittee. So, please, let's not one little bump in the road take away from the progress this council's made, or the town manager. Thank you.
Council DePietro. Council Mackenzie?
I've said enough tonight. Thank you very much. I'll pass.
Council Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I said enough tonight too, but I always have more to say. I don't believe there was a witch hunt up here at all. I believe that we were doing what the contract stated. I believe if we had questions, we should have, you know, of course, asked here too in regards to the questions, but also ask questions in regards to what's in our packet before the meeting. You know, talk about being blindsided. You know, and I'm going to be honest with you. I didn't hear any mumblings about anything, about anything. I saw the same agenda item the same time you guys, if you opened up your packet on Thursday night, at that time. So, you know, I, I don't think there was any malicious intent at all. I don't believe it was politically, nothing was politically motivated. I have seen political motivation upon this board in years past. I've had seen personnel issues discussed up here in the past on certain personnel in this community that should not have ever been discussed up here. And I would like to see this go to a special meeting still, so we can discuss it. Here it is. Thank you. That's it. Oh, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Certainly hope I didn't seem non-committal, not recognizing anything that might have been stated within council rules and regs with my initial comment of a no vote. But I appreciate the good discussion that we had. Obviously, while I've paid attention for many years, still learn something every day, especially during our meetings, so. I don't think I'll touch on that anymore. I just want to point out a couple of things. I don't think that the chair brought up during chairperson's announcements, but there is an event for the cops and kids golf outing at Cohasse on Friday, August 4th. I'm really looking forward to this. I am not very good on the Facebook or with email sometimes, but I hope that people are paying attention. I hope that if there are any spots available, you'll please reach out to the police department. I think Deputy Chief Dinghy is handling. I do know from some correspondence with him that they're still looking for sponsorship, so if you or your local businesses can assist, please reach out and do whatever you can. I think it's a great cause, very worthwhile, and I'm sure that Friday will be a great time. I'm looking forward to getting out and hitting about 120. Also, very pleased that you mentioned, and I look forward to attending the Southbridge Business Partnership on Wednesday at 5:30. I think it's at Village Photo. I don't know if you mentioned that. One other quick note, and I don't have firsthand information happy to kind of show you around what the capital improvement projects that we're working on and what our plans are on long-term. Heather, if you want to just address the biotower question?
I can address the biotower and where we are in that contract. That contract has been awarded, and I'm not going to remember the name, but we had a reconstruction meeting already, so they're already gearing up and doing their semitals and all of that timeframe. They'll be a little low before they start construction, because there's a lot of long lead time on those items, so, but it has been awarded, so it is already underway. Both the biotower, the sludge dewatering, and the phosphorus chemical addition projects are all in construction. You're not seeing a lot of physical construction, because they just started basically two weeks ago. So we're in the seminal timeframe, getting things approved stage. Okay?
Thank you. May I wrap up with one final point? Thank you, Mr. Town Manager and Director Blakely. Just to kind of piggyback off things that we've said and heard, and I certainly hope that we as a council can come together on other issues despite having some differences. You know, I, I think that there is a lot of commonality, there's a lot of progress that needs to be made, so let's put it behind us and get back to work. Thank you.
Councillor O'Clair? Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I had a couple of things. When I got here tonight at about 10 of 7, both the doors were locked. You know, one being locked is bad, both being locked is awful. So I can't, I can't imagine that somebody accidentally locked two doors, so can we please keep an eye on that next time?
Councillor O'Clair? Do you have a key?
No.
Most of the other councillors do have keys. Would you like a key? We can get you a key.
It doesn't, it's an open meeting, and citizens should be able to...
No, you know, they should be able to get in.
It was unlocked at 20 to 6.
Yeah, that's why we're wondering, because it wasn't locked.
I'm trying to set it.
We've got to relax.
Just mention.
But we'll get your key, just so you have one too, for those occasions where it may be helpful to be in and out.
Okay. Also, thank you. Also, going back to the moving citizens' forum to the end of the council, we're at what time? What time? 20 of 10. So we're going to be expecting our citizens, our constituents, the people that would put us in office, to sit around and wait until the very end of the agenda. In my opinion, our citizens come first. They pay for the salaries or the fees of the guests that we have here in the audience, and they should have a right to speak before that absolute end of the meeting. It's unfair for people with families, for people with, with jobs that have to be up early in the morning. Not every one of, not every person in Southbridge can make the same commitment that we've made, and they still deserve to be heard at meetings. Also, you know, by the, by the charter, can we please put on the agenda next meeting to remove Gus Steves as vice-chair? The making it up as we go along remark is not, is not acceptable for somebody in a leadership role in this council, and I would like to see that on the agenda for full transparency. Thank you.
Councillor Carrasco?
Yeah, I just, I find it, I know we've had a lot of discussion today, but I, I find it interesting that on Wednesday, we have a special meeting for a dog, but we can't have a special meeting to discuss other things prior to making it public. Another thing, I received a phone call from someone in Boston, which alarmed me, which really puzzled me. And I have a question to our chair. Can you provide update in regards to an airport grant that you sought for the town of Southbridge for a specific hangar? Because I knew nothing about this, and I know it got approved, it got through the government, then it got vetoed, or it's still in the works. I just, again, for transparency's sake, I asked the town manager. The town manager told me that he did know about it when the senator's office called them and let them know, and you went and spoke to him about it also. But again, this is another item that we knew nothing, that we were applying for a grant, and specific councillors going, I mean, we have, we're trying to get money for the fire station, and they couldn't do that, but they put in money for the airport? I don't know.
Would you like me to answer, sir?
Please.
So actually, it was Senator Fatman who had toured the airport some time ago, before last year's budget, and asked what the airport needed. Now, at the time, the airport commission had extended information of certain things that they wanted, like windows for the diner, they wanted renovations to the hangar buildings, and having been up there and being friendly with the flight school that was there, trying to encourage business, actually, probably one of the only councillors who actually even spent much time up there, and trying to encourage business up there and such, and going to airport commission meetings and listening to what was going on and the needs, when Senator Fatman asked what the needs were, I went to the airport commission and said, Senator Fatman has said that he believes he could get some money to help with these needs, and that's what I did. And the airport commission put together a list, which I absolutely worked with, I say worked with, I was new, we talked, and they put the list into Senator Fatman, and it went to the governor, it went as a amendment, or whatever they called it. The money has been, it was close to $50,000, and the money is in limbo, because while the governor, yeah, it went through, it went through the House, it went through the Senate, it went to the governor, then it got vetoed by the governor, then it went back into the, however that process works, back through, and they, they put it back in, but the money's all been frozen, because there is no money in the state. So kudos to the airport commission and all for wanting to not have us spend the free cash, which is what we just did, on those items. So far be it for me not to advocate for this community the way everybody I would expect to advocate for this community. So if that's, if that's wrong, encouraging the, you know, accepting someone's offer to put them with the airport commission, who is a, I guess, a quasi-judicial in a lot of ways, you know, they run the airport, then, then I'm guilty as charged, or whatever is your intent of this. You could have called and asked me, you could have talked about, you could have at any time.
I got the phone call today, so I wanted to know what was going on, because again...
Well, nothing's going on, because the state has no money to actually give it to us, but it was nice of Senator Fatman to go out and ask for the money for us.
Okay, no problem.
When he came to the diner for breakfast, he said, what does the place need?
Again, I wanted to make sure that we knew, because I, I heard about it, and I called Boston myself today. So I said, what's going on here? Because I need to know.
I certainly hope that they can still, somewhere along the line, come up with that money, but I don't imagine that's going to happen.
If it's, if it comes, it's great. I, we need it. We need the money. But again, I just found it interesting that we were, we've been asking for money from our legislators for different projects, and...
It was offered, I didn't ask for it.
We get...
It was, I, because the airport was in, in process, so it was offered.
Okay. Because I just, again, I would love to be able to get more money, obviously, from the legislators.
Absolutely. It's not like I haven't asked for any, it's saying, geez, you know, keep our air, keep our, keep our fire station in mind, keep our, all, all the different things, roads. We advocate for that, that's what we're elected to do for this community.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So...
It was a transportation grant, I believe, or transportation, it was in the transportation budget, transportation and tourism budget, which I guess had a little more leeway than some of the other areas, according to Senator, which is why he thought he could get an amendment, because regional air, regional airports are very important, which is why we have a three and a half million dollar hangar, excuse me, administration building that was just blessed and, and given the money for, because this state feels regional airports are very important. So that's why the transportation bill allowed. That's all I, that's all I've got for you, sir.
Okay. To the citizens of Southbridge, continue to get involved. This is your city, this is your town, this is your moment. Your involvement depends the direction of this council. If you don't get involved, we will continue to see and do things. We need citizen input. We need citizen input, we need you to hear, if you can. It's difficult to hear that it's going to go to the end of the agenda, but that's, that's leadership's decision, so that's a decision that they would make. But at the end of the day, we still need you involved. We still want to hear you. Come to the podium. I will listen to you, I will respect you, I will watch you, I will look at you, I will write notes, because this is our town. There's many different opportunities to get involved, and I, just for the record, I know that the chair and the leadership has appointed me as the EHS Subcommittee Chair, and I'm going to respectfully decline that appointment. I will not put myself in any position to continue to be targeted by individuals claiming and making false accusations in regards to conflict of interest. I have done anything, nothing wrong, and therefore, I am not going to put myself in a position where people are going to say, he's got a conflict of interest, he's got a, because he does things for the city, and he's, he has a church, and, and he, he has an organization that helps youths, youths. I'm not going to put myself in a position where I can give people ammunition to continue to shoot me in the back. So therefore, tonight, I respectfully decline that appointment, and I prefer not to be on that committee, and I would like to just be a regular member of this town council and not be part of any subcommittee. If there's an issue, I will be there, I will voice my opinion, but I do not, again, want to continue to give people the ammunition to continue to make false accusations. That's all I got to say.
All set. Councillor Morales?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to wish everybody a blessed week. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Steves?
I've got two quick things. I've got two quick things. One is that, for people who are concerned, have been concerned about the whole issue surrounding Harrington and the closing of the birthing center, the Mass DPH, the Department of Public Health, is having a forum to discuss the issue at the Public House on Friday, the 28th, the 2:00 p.m. It's, I think it was called together by people that were actually at Stirbridge to do it, but it's open to the public, so if you have any concerns, definitely go down there and see what DPH is thinking about that. So if we can, I don't know what their thought process is, I don't know if it's something that can be changed. It certainly seems to me like it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have our hospital not have the capacity to give birth to children, but you should certainly participate and voice your opinions on that. And the other issue is that, I remember a couple of meetings ago, I was wondering about whether or not it would be possible for the town to, to help people who have had issues with, with maintaining their properties and not having the funds to do so, because we were talking, and we were talking in the past about, you know, demolitions and things like that. And I actually came across something that's not town-related, but it could be useful for a lot of people in our community, and that's the Habitat for Humanity Critical Home Repair Program. It helps families who have 30 to 60 percent of median income, which at the moment is roughly $26,250 to $52,500. Do exterior repairs address health, life, and safety and code issues in their primary residence, if they're current on the mortgages, insurance, and taxes, and certain other requirements? As the website states, the repayment may be required in the form of sweat equity and a 0 percent interest loan. If anybody's interested, you can contact Habitat for Humanity at 508-799-9259, or go to their website, which is habitatmwgw.org. And hopefully, there are people who may need that, who didn't know about it, and can take advantage of that. And that's it.
Next council meeting dates?
Next one I have listed is, oh, besides Wednesday. We have this Wednesday at 7:00, and then the 14th at 7:00.
Just point out, there was another email today, for those who don't remember, didn't notice it yet, on Wednesday's meeting from the animal control officer. So if you haven't seen that in your email, there's another document in regards to Wednesday's meeting. Okay, at this time, we have an executive session set, so agenda item number 21 is vote to enter into executive session according to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the governor's litigation position, government's litigation position, and if the chair so declares to return to open forum to vote and adjourn. And I do believe we will be returning to vote here and to adjourn. So roll call, please, to... Oh, wait, sorry, need a vote.
Sound moved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Councillor De Pietro?
Yes.
Councillor McKenzie?
Yes.
Councillor Manah?
Yes.
Councillor Morales?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay, we're back in session, and could we have a roll call, please?
Okay. Councillor O'Clair?
Present.
Councillor Carrasco?
Present.
Councillor Clements?
Present.
Councillor De Pietro?
Present.
Councillor McKenzie?
Present.
Councillor Manah?
Present.
Councillor Morales?
Present.
Councillor Nash?
Present.
Councillor Steves?
Present. Nine present.
Thank you. Agenda item number 22, vote to transfer $200,000 from landfill royalties number 6790 to special article landfill legal fees to pay for landfill-related legal costs.
Should we formally move to add that to the agenda?
It's part of the executive session.
Okay. Second.
Discussion? Further discussion? Roll call. For the public, these are costs related to legal fees for the landfill that we've just been discussing for quite some time. Okay, seeing none, a roll call, please.
Councillor De Pietro?
Yes.
Councillor McKenzie?
Yes.
Councillor Manah?
Yes.
Councillor Morales?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yep.
I'm sorry, yes?
Yes.
Councillor O'Clair?
Yes.
Councillor Carrasco?
Yes.
Councillor Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. See you Wednesday.